Good morning and welcome to the June 18th City Council Meeting. First off, we want to thank David Lewis and the Muskogee County School District for allowing us to utilize their facilities while Election Day is proceeding over in the Red McDaniel Center over there. So, we're delighted that you guys are here. I ask you to bear with us. This is a little different console than we're used to, so it may take me a minute or two, councilors, to try to get the right lights turned on, so your patience is appreciated. We're going to begin as we always do, and that's by asking for God's presence and grace over these proceedings. So, I'm going to ask Dr. Lynn Meadows-White with the Methodist Children's Home of Columbus, Georgia, to come to the podium. And Lynn, you may have to push that button so we can try to get it...
Okay.
Green light now?
There you are.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Mayor Henderson, and in the spirit of transparency, I'm glad to be promoted to doctor, but I'm a plain old rev. So, it's good to be with you all this morning. Let's pray together. Gracious and loving God, we thank you for a beautiful day in the making and for the privilege you've given us of being citizens of this community together. Thank you for these who've been elected as public servants and for their willingness to give of themselves for the sake of others. God stir up in them and in all of us a deep desire to seek the common good, to pursue justice, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with you. And as this council deliberates today, may all that they do reflect the conviction that every person in our community is of infinite worth and value, made in your very image, and may that conviction guide and shape every word spoken, every decision made. No matter how mundane or ordinary the topics may seem, even if in the smallest of ways, by your grace, let this meeting be a part of enabling your kingdom to come and your will to be done right here among us today and throughout our beloved community. We pray all this with gratitude, and in your holy name, amen.
Amen. Lynn, thank you, and thank you so much for the incredible work you guys are doing at the Methodist Center. We appreciate it. Yes, ma'am. All right, if you would, please stand and join me in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first order of business to approve the minutes from the June 11th meeting. We have a motion from Council Tucker. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second from Council Kogle. Any edits or any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. We got a couple of proclamations and a resolution on the mayor's agenda this morning. First off, is, um, is, uh, I lost my place. It's Council Tucker with the Juneteenth presentation. Did it come on there? All right.
You may turn it off.
I can... Yeah, turn yours off.
Okay.
All right.
All righty. It is a great pleasure to be able to read this proclamation today. So excited about our third year of celebrating Juneteenth Jubilee, thankful for the committee and all the members of the Juneteenth Jubilee Commission, and absolutely thankful for the city of Columbus and the Civic Center. I appreciate you. So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas Union General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and issued General Order Number Three officially proclaiming the emancipation of enslaved Africans in the state. And whereas this momentous occasion known as Juneteenth marked a significant milestone in the journey toward freedom and equality for African-Americans in the United States. And whereas Juneteenth commemorates the end of slavery in our nation and serves as a reminder of the perseverance, resilience, and strength of the African-American community. And whereas the city of Columbus and the Juneteenth Jubilee Commission recognize the Battle of Columbus, which occurred on April 16, 1865, as our local Juneteenth Jubilee Freedom Day. And many Civil War historians claim the Battle of Columbus was the last battle of the Civil War. And whereas Juneteenth stands as a testament of, to the ongoing struggle for civil rights and social justice, and provides an opportunity for all Americans to reflect upon our shared history, acknowledge the injustices of the past, and commit ourselves to building a more inclusive and equitable future. And whereas it is fitting and proper that we, as a community, join together to commemorate Juneteenth and honor the achievements and resilience of the African-American community. And whereas during the month of June, let us come together as one community embracing the spirit of Juneteenth, working towards a future where justice, equality, and opportunity prevail for all. And whereas the Columbus Consolidated Government and the Juneteenth Jubilee Commission are proud to celebrate the Juneteenth holiday by coordinating a series of events and activities during the month of June and/or in honor of the national holiday that commemorates the emancipation of enslaved African-Americans. Now therefore, Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim June 12 through the 22nd, 2024, as Juneteenth Jubilee."
I stand just as in acceptance of this proclamation, but there are more than 30 or so that are actually on the committee that have put this together. I definitely want to commend City Councilor Toya Tucker and the previous director, Rob Landers, who put the first Juneteenth celebration together here in this city that we call home. So, we are looking forward to the activities of Juneteenth. If you missed on Sunday, and then you have also on yesterday, the Men of Motown Celebration and Event that was at the Springer Opera House, you missed a treat. It was absolutely wonderful. Last year's was great, and this year's was even better. And so, if you missed that, make sure that you take, make sure that you put on your calendar for next year. They're coming back. So, a few activities that we have planned, and I have the co-chairs that will, behind me, that are actually going to tell you a little bit more, a little bit more about some of the activities. But we do have on today the Historic Bike Ride, which is going to be in Woodruff Park. So, if you, and that starts at 5:00, so please dust off those bikes and come on out and take part in that. On tonight as well, at 8:00, there's going to be a night parade and block party also in Woodruff Park immediately following that. On tomorrow is going to be the actual Juneteenth, which is June the 19th is what it means, and that's a commemorative service at 11:00 a.m. at Pierce Chapel. Also, at 9:30 on the 21st at Pierce Chapel, there are going to be some historic salt photographs. And then on the 21st, from 8:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., there's going to be the AKA Western Ball that they have each year at the Trade Center. And then, of course, we're going to, all of this is going to come together at the Civic Center on June the 22nd, and I'm going to ask Kanise Wiggins, who is the Assistant Director for the Civic Center, to just share with you what that is going to look like. Kanise?
Hello, good morning. So, on June 22nd, there's going to be the Juneteenth Jubilee. It's going to be absolutely amazing. There's going to be vendors. There's going to be a sorority and fraternity stroll off. There's also going to be live entertainment from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. So, come out. It is a free event, and it is going to embody culture and the amazing citizens of Columbus.
Awesome.
Sure. I just want to say that I'm really honored to have served with Kanise and Assistant City Manager as one of the co-chairs for this year's Juneteenth Celebration. I'm very, very excited about it. Again, I want to also thank Aflac, who was one of the major, or is a signature sponsor of this year's event. We also have the Clothes Story Event that's at the Springer, which was in place during the Men of Motown, and it'll be there today and tomorrow, so if you have an opportunity to go by the Springer to see that event as well, please go by there. But I'm really pleased and excited that we are, this is our third year of our Juneteenth Celebration, and trying to make it bigger and better.
So, thank you for this recognition, and we look forward to seeing you at some of these Juneteenth celebrations up until the 22nd. So, thank you so much.
Well, thank you for the co-chairs, and certainly Council Tucker for all their hard work in trying to put this on over here. Doesn't just happen.
That's right.
It's a lot of planning, so thank you all for, if you would come up here, let us thank you, and we'll present you with the proclamation. All right, next, we're going to have an update on the mayor's agenda from the Development Authority. It's going to be presented by Gerald Mitchell, the President and CEO of the Greater Columbus, Georgia Chamber of Commerce. Gerald, welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, I want to thank you guys for the request for an update and the honor or privilege of being able to provide it to you. A couple of quick notes. I want to thank Heeshandlmeyer, who is the past Chairman of the Board of the Development Authority for his service to the organization, his service to the community. I also want to thank Sylvan Hollingsworth for his election by the Board as the Chairman of the Development Authority, and to Charles Ray Sheffield, who has also been elected as the Vice Chairman of the Development Authority Board. And lastly, I want to congratulate and welcome Will White to the Board. Thank you all for appointing him. We look forward to his support and engagement as we continue to work to move the needle on behalf of the community. So, again, we appreciate your support in this as well, because not only the village, but other dollars that you guys have approved to support small business engagement and support our efforts in robotics have also been making a difference, and I'll point to those in just a moment. What I'm generally going to do here is talk a little bit about some of the things that we've been engaged in, both recently and on an ongoing basis. Those things will come out in our quarterly newsletter, which you all will receive. We usually, when that comes out on a quarterly basis, we send it to the clerk and make sure that each of you get it. If you're not getting it, let us know. We'll make sure that you do get that as well. But recently, we provided an update to the state's project management team. They go all around the world, looking at different companies that are looking to expand, and they work to expose those companies to different communities in Georgia. So, it's important that we update them on a regular basis such that Columbus and its assets are front of mind. In addition to that, we recently, as in two weeks ago, participated in the Bio International Conference. It's a life sciences conference, very big one, and we believe that Columbus has lots of assets in the life sciences arena that we've already invested in. We've got two very reputable hospital systems. We've got the investment that's been made in Mercer Medical School, as well as the presence of Morehouse School of Medicine. There are also some other assets in that space, but we think that those build out an ecosystem that is appealing or attractive to companies in that space. So, we're trying to get exposure to them. We've got a list of attendees, and we're going to do some follow-up to those attendees that we gained exposure to and that we think might be compatible for Columbus. On another level, we've got site preparation activities that are ongoing. Part of the name of the game as it relates to economic development and its success in that space is making sure that we can provide speed to market for companies that are in growth mode. And that means us making sure that when companies are looking at sites or buildings that can help them do that, that are compatible with their needs, we want to make sure that those things are as close to ready as possible. Currently, we've got both small, medium, and large options that are available for companies. We've got parcel nine at Muskogee Technology Park. That is a 17-acre site. It is pad-ready, and when I say pad-ready, it means that the engineering's been done, the earthwork has been done, so trees have been removed, there is a flat pad, utilities are at the curb. So, once we understand the company's design, we then have the ability to, again, present it in a way that shows them speed to market. We've got parcel five that is also pad-ready. That is a 36-acre site, so that's our medium option. We've got parcel 11, which is currently in process. That's a 64-acre parcel. And all of these parcels, by the way, that are pad-ready or near-ready have been getting the attention of opportunities. So, again, want to make sure that that is clear. And there are two parcels, thanks to the work that the city's doing, parcel 17 and 18 at Muskogee Technology Park, that actually provide or present us with an extremely large opportunity. That one's over 230 acres with those two parcels together. The city's actually doing some clearing for us. So, again, that's very good, because as companies come, they can see that with these parcels, having trees removed, having a flat pad available, they are positioned to cut maybe six months or so off of their window or their startup time. So, again, that's a very good thing. One of the other nuggets that is really important for us to position and promote is the fact that the Sunova's headquarters building will be available soon. That's 120,000 square feet of Class A office space in Columbus with 700-plus parking spaces. There is not a Class A office building of that size available in the state outside of the Atlanta metro. So, again, that positions us really well for office-type opportunities. So, again, that's very good. Work continues from a regional standpoint through our engagement with the Valley Partnership. What we're working through, because those communities in our region are at various states of readiness, is we're back at basics. We're talking about infrastructure. We're talking about workforce development and how people in some of our surrounding counties can connect with opportunities or companies in Columbus that are looking for people. We're working through supporting Main Street programs, so that, again, there are some opportunities there. And then pursuit of grants where it makes sense. Again, one of the biggest things that make us competitive or less competitive is infrastructure. And that's not just roads. That's airports, that's, you know, high-speed internet, broadband. It's a lot of different things from an infrastructure standpoint that make us more or less competitive. So, again, we're trying to focus on that. We continue to advance robotics efforts. Again, this is very important for us as a region. The biggest, I think, feather in our cap as a region is that the commanding general, the position, not the person, the position of commanding general at Fort Moore is now the head of robotics for the U.S. Army. What that means is decisions about training and integration of robots in the field of combat, those decisions are being made here in Columbus, and we believe that is attractive to industry. Not only do we have that, we've got people at the battle labs on Fort Moore that are exiting the military with skills in the robotics arena. We've got MCSD training our young people with skill sets in robotics. Further, we've got programs at Columbus State University in robotics and at Columbus Technical College. So, again, we've got an ecosystem already in place, people obtaining or have obtained these skill sets. And again, we think that that positions us well. To that extent, we've been engaging in several conferences in the robotics space. AUSA, it's the Association of the U.S. Army, their robotics conference, the Unmanned Systems West Conference, the AUSA Annual Meeting, the International Armored Vehicle Conference, the AUSA Chapter Industry Day, Emerging and Disruptive Technology Defense Conference, and then several drone simulations that are going to culminate with a Beehive competition that will actually be held here. Our goal is to invite companies in for that so that they can, again, witness the ecosystem that's in place here in Columbus. We continue to, again, try to move the needle on small business and engagement that's associated. Our team conducts daily business visits with small businesses. Again, if you know small businesses that need our help or support, please let us know. We will make an appointment with them, and we will go and connect. Not only are we trying to help them with buildings and land, but we're also trying to connect them with resources like SBA or SBDC or other partners that can continue to help them move the needle and that they may not have access to. So, again, that's really important. We've executed this year the Small Business Boot Camp. We have had the Mayor's Roundtable with Small Business, where we allow businesses to talk about things that can improve the business environment for them. And then, we've got an upcoming Small Business Summer Series. There will be five different components to that, and again, it's connecting small businesses with service providers. So, again, we have that in the works. We're partnering with other chambers, for example, the Georgia Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, to make sure, again, that we're reaching, and the River Valley Black Chamber as well, but just to make sure that we're reaching as many businesses as we possibly can. And then, we're also working under the Small Business umbrella to address access to capital and financial toolkits, again, that help small businesses. We're looking toward establishing a Small Business Revolving Loan Fund, potentially a Facade Improvement Fund, just those types of things that are small, they're not going to deliver hundreds of thousands of dollars to business, but being able to support through some sort of micro lending that, again, helps move the needle for various businesses. Headwinds, because I know that that might be of interest to some people, but some of the headwinds that we see, when we look at the winds that you see maybe in Atlanta or in Augusta or in Savannah or some of these other places, and what those things really come down to, anytime we lose a project, by the way, I want you guys to know, I take it very personally. And I call the state and I call other partners to find out what happened. Some of the things that rise to the top most frequently are interstate infrastructure. While we have I-185, it is not viewed as a mainline interstate. So, again, we've got to work to continue to address that perception and try to enhance that as we get opportunities to do so. Proximity to large assets. And when I say that, I mean the Georgia Ports Authority, I mean Hartsfield, we don't have those two things, so we have to sell other attributes or benefits of Columbus. The primary one is quality of life. Periodically, we hear about workforce abundance. There are sometimes you have these large projects that are looking for, again, like a Hyundai, tens of thousands of employees, and we have to position our workforce in a way that gives the company comfort that we're going to be able to address those needs as well. So, those are the top three. And then, one other thing that comes up periodically is people look for existing buildings. Usually, those requests come in the 100,000 to 150,000 square foot range, where companies are looking for existing manufacturing facilities that are vacant, that are in that range. So, if you know of any, we work pretty well with the commercial real estate community, but if you know of any that are out there, or if there are companies that are out there that have large footprints, large building footprints that they're not utilizing, you know, please let us know that, because, again, we want to make sure that we put those on the radar if there's a potential for availability. But I'll stop there. I just wanted to kind of give you guys an idea of some of the things that are going on from an economic development standpoint, and happy to answer any questions.
Gerald, thank you for the update. Yeah, and, you know, in conversations with Pat from up at the Economic Development Department in Georgia, we're in very good stead. Columbus is always one of the finalists, and so there are just some of those things that we've got to, we've got to begin to kind of overcome. I would love to tell you who's up next. Council Davis?
Thanks, Mayor. Gerald, Sylvan, thank you all for coming today. Very good presentation.
Thank you for the request.
And this is good. We get a lot of questions all the time, and so just come in, in an effort to be transparent, let people know what's going on. I think it's a good thing that they get to know us all. It's a very good thing. We appreciate all you all do, and like I said, come see us more often, okay?
I will, and I appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Okay. No further questions, Gerald?
Thank you.
Sylvan, thank you. Appreciate you all making time out of your morning. All right, next, we've got an opportunity. Council wants to recognize the efforts of an individual that has been serving in a temporary capacity, and just personally want to say I admire his integrity and I admire the way he's conducted his business. He's been proactive, hasn't sat in the chair taking up space. He's been actually looking for ways to improve Columbus, and I have no doubt he'll continue to do it, and we have been very fortunate, in my opinion, to have had Tyson Begley on this council for the last year. Mr. Mayor Protem, you've got a resolution.
I do, and before I begin to read it, I just want to say, as you deck of some of your comments, you came in and picked up on the city operations and the protocols so quickly. I was very impressed and have enjoyed working with you over this year and a half, I guess. But this is, it's been a pleasure working with you, and this resolution speaks for itself, and it reads as follows, "Whereas Tyson Begley is an experienced CFO and COO, consultant and tech advisor with a strong background in business, finance, and investment. With over 20 years of experience, he has achieved marked market success in helping companies grow and accomplish technology and growth initiatives. His career spans from tiny startups to Fortune 500 companies, as well as nonprofit and political positions. Whereas currently Tyson serves as Senior Vice President of High Line Services, a fiber broadband company focused on rural regions of America, where he oversees M&amp;A and federal funding efforts. Previously Tyson held the positions of Chief Financial Officer and Chief Operating Officer at Delta Data. Before his tenure at Delta Data, Tyson spent seven years as a management and technology consultant, working with Fortune 500 clients on large technology projects, post-M&amp;A synergies and industry-wide compliance initiatives at Accenture and Diamond Management and Technology Consultants. Whereas in addition to his professional career, Tyson is an accomplished community leader. He has been recognized as one of Columbus' Top Five Under 40 by the Columbus and Valley Magazine, was a member of Leadership Columbus, and graduated from the Leadership Georgia class of 2022. Tyson has served in various leadership roles, including as a citywide councillor on the City Council, Secretary Treasurer of the Development Authority of Columbus, Chair of the Public Safety Advisory Committee, and Board Chair for Open Door Community House. Whereas Tyson holds a Bachelor's Degree of Computer Engineering, Tyson holds a Bachelor of Computer Engineering degree with summa cum laude honors from Auburn University and a Master of Business Administration from Duke University, the Fuqua School of Business, where he received Dean's List honors. He graduated as valedictorian from high school in Enterprise, Alabama, in 1998. Whereas Tyson's family includes his wife, Becca, their two children, Hudson and Amelia. Now therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, we hereby express our deep appreciation to Tyson Begley for his dedicated service to the Columbus Council and the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, and we wish him every success in the future."
Is there a motion to approve the resolution? So moved. Your second. All in favor, please stand. Mr. Begley, if you push that button, I'll try to find the right button over here to... Did it get you?
I think it's in the middle.
Hang on, let's... There we go.
Thank you. I would like a couple chances. There's no way to thank everyone. I mean, it takes everyone to be successful up here, all of City Council, all... I mean, it takes everyone to be successful up here, all of City Council, all the city staff. I did wanna call up just a couple names. I hope I don't forget anyone, but the, the entire city staff was helpful. City Manager, I don't think you and I really knew each other before this, but every request, every information I've asked for has always been provided. And I know I ask for a lot of information, and I send a lot of emails, and so, I, I appreciate that. Ms. Davis, thank you for keeping my foot out of my mouth every time I had a question. I asked you first, make sure I didn't, before I said it in public. I think, and, and everyone, I saw the sheriff here. Thank you for showing me the jail. I don't know if the warden's here, but showed me the prison. The, the tax commissioner back there for sitting down with me for three hours to walk through numbers. Everyone has been so helpful. Lucy in Clifton, I appreciate your objective advice and making sure I don't get in trouble. Councilor Huff, if, if you remember, when I was appointed, he was the only one who, who didn't support my appointment. And he told me that night, he's like, "It's not personal." He said, "I, I look forward to working with you." And he's been nothing but supportive the entire time. Council, Councilor Allen's been helpful. Anytime I do something he disagrees with, he, he lets me know in a very polite way of how, how to react. Mayor, I've, I've looked up to the mayor for a long time, just the way you conduct yourself, the pride you take in taking care of the community, the, the way you do it in such a humble manner. I, I've always looked up to you, and I appreciate your advice. Councilor Garrett, he's the reason I started getting involved. Several years ago, he suggested I get involved with Public Safety Advisory Commission. And I'm, I'm glad I took that advice, and it's been a rewarding experience serving ever since. And then, last but obviously not least, I appreciate all the citizens who allowed me to serve. I know it's, it's not normal to have someone represent you that you didn't elect. And so, remember, as a reminder, today's election day, so make sure you do vote. But there's a lot of people who I didn't know, and I appreciate them taking the time to grab coffee with me, grab lunch with me, send me your questions, send me your requests, and just allow me to, to try to serve you even though I wasn't elected. It's been a real privilege to, to serve in this role, and I look forward to contributing to Columbus in the future.
Councilor Garrett?
Tyson, it's been a privilege to serve with you on council. I'm proud of the work you've done. I think you fulfilled everything I was hoping you would, as far as the newsletter, like Councilor Huff did, and you did it really well. You informed the, all of the constituents in the city. And put a lot of time and effort into that. I certainly wish I had, had that, that much time, but you, you cranked it out, got good information to your constituents, and really appreciate the creativity you brought to council and the business ideas you brought from the private sector and analyzing things in a different way. And, you know, as my friend, I, I love the fact that we don't always agree, but we always discuss, you know, what our rationale is behind each one of our sides. And we always at least talk cordially and come to whatever conclusion we come to, but we always stay friends afterwards. But it's been a, a privilege to serve with you and wish you the best of luck. I hope you'll continue to serve the city in other ways.
Councilor Huff?
Councilor Begley, it's been a pleasure working with you. We started out a little rough because I had promised my vote to someone else. So, I told him, "My word is my bond," so I had to do what I had to do. But we got a chance to meet quickly and got, became friends quickly. Had the opportunity to have a conversation with him at Panera Bread, and he had his wife and kids, and I got a chance to meet the family. They have followed him around and just really supported you. Yeah, your wife's very proud of you. Yeah. But I thank you for all that you've helped me with. We've sat down, we've had conversations about serious numbers. Numbers, that's your, that's your area. Yeah, you get deep into it. But recently, I just wanted to say this to close out. We had a situation out in the community, and Councilor Begley jumped all over it. They sent it to myself and both citywide counselors, and he got right on it. I had a few things going, I made contact, but he started it and finished it. And I was riding the neighborhood to check it out a couple of weeks ago. And on my first pass, I understood what he had done. On my second pass, the constituent was in the yard. She recognized me as soon as I pulled up, and she said, "Councilor Begley has been phenomenal." Said, "I couldn't have asked for more." So, we talked about everything that was going on, how you handle things, and it kinda diffused the issue with the neighbor next door because he was threatening her pets and a few other things. So, thank you so much, but I sent you an email. I hope you received it. I sent it to you, I sent it to the constituent, thanking you for the job you did, and how well it went, and how proud we both were of what you did. Thank you so much, I wish you well. We, we have something in common as far as next year in the spring, so we'll be at the baseball park. See you then, take care.
Thanks, sir. Ms. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Councilor Begley for his service. And I must say that, listening to the Mayor Protem share your credentials, I understand you a little better now. Perhaps I should have read your credentials a little bit earlier. But very impressive credentials. And CFO and COO, you've, you've done a lot of what we do down here at City Hall. Hearing your credentials helped me understand why I would get all those questions and all of those emails, and staff would get them. And I think staff would agree that Councilor Begley digs deep. And, you know, I learned early that he's not gonna go along to get along. And, and for us as staff, that makes us better. It challenges us, so I want to just say thank you for your, your service. You've been impressive, and we're gonna miss you.
Councilor Kogle?
Councilor Begley, I just wanted to say thank you for your service. As you know, well, I know, as much as you know, that there's no instruction manual to City Council, and you kind of get thrown into the shark waters and have to figure it out. So, thank you for drinking from that farm, that fire hose, and I know it was a lot, and you did a good job with it. You are very persistent in your, in your, in your questions. So, I know that that is one of the, the things that I appreciate from you, and I know that's one of the big things that we're gonna miss from you. So, I hope that we are able to get you on some boards and, and continue that, 'cause we really do need that in our city. We need those questions. So, thank you for your service and good luck in the future.
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilor, finally, before, I know the Mayor Protem has a plaque. He's gonna present on behalf of the entire council, but I just wanna tell you, you're, you've been a really good city counselor. You've been a really good dad and a good husband, and there's not much else in life that you need to aspire for. But I have a feeling we'll see you contributing somewhere, somehow, in this city very, very shortly. So, thank you again for all of your, your tireless efforts. I'm not sure who that... Councilor Davis, is that yours?
No, I just wanna say, Tyson, thank you for your willingness to serve. I think you did a great job, and the citizens are really appreciative of that. And not a lot of people are willing to do it. It's not easy in the, in the forum. It's a different forum, you know, debating the deliberation, but that's okay. We don't always agree to disagree, but we listen. I listen to you. You made some valuable points many, many times. It causes us, as the city manager said, a challenge. Challenge is not always bad. Consternation is not always bad. It pushes us to be better and to reach goals and achieve more, more and more success. And that's, that's not a bad thing. I always said that sometimes failure is the, the backdoor to success, and it is. And I learned that lesson a long time ago. But you've done a great job, wanna thank you for that on behalf of the citizens. And I wish you the best in your career. I think you're gonna get a little gift. I was asked to go to my selection. It's one of my faves, and I hope you enjoy it, my friend.
Ms. City Attorney?
I just wanna echo everybody, and Tyson, tell you, we have enjoyed working with you. I think you've had me and Lucy Sheffield on the speed dial, but you caught on fast. As an old Davidson College guy, I respect that Duke, Duke University degree. I can't comment on that Auburn thing, but, anyway, we've, we've enjoyed working with you, and you have fun with your young family and enjoy them, but we'll see. I'm sure you'll stay involved, but you've done a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I got a plaque for you, Tyson, and it, it, I hope when you look at it, you'll realize how much we appreciate you. But I, I hope when you look at it, you'll also realize how much the citizens thank you for serving and taking the time out of your schedule to devote many, many hours to study. And, and, like everybody has said, you, you caught up so quick on the protocols and the function of, of a city and the management and what we do as a council, and we appreciate that. And so, it, it reads, it reads simply but with heartfelt thanks for dedication, dedicated service presented to Tyson Begley, Columbus Consolidated Government, City Counselor, District 10, 2023 to 2024.
And we, we still have, I think, one more counselor. We'll see if it pops up. Councilor Tucker?
Yes, Council Begley. I wanted to thank you on behalf of the Audit Committee. I know we had, it was very vigorous. We had a lot of work to do in a short period of time, but thanks for pulling it together and, you know, getting the structure as something new that we have never had before. And thanks to the citizens of Columbus, we actually have it based on the Charter Review Committee. I appreciate the questions. One of the things that I learned in DC while I was at training, through adaptive leadership, you have to ask good questions. Although sometimes it may be uncomfortable, you gotta bring, push the heat up, you know, in order to get productive change. So, I appreciate you. I appreciate your tenacity, your eagerness, your willingness to serve, 'cause now everybody likes to sit in the hot seat. And I'm sure I'm, see you around, and, and I appreciate you. Like, when you first got on council, we did, we went to go get coffee as well. I think you like drinking coffee or something. But thank you, I appreciate you.
And, and just one final note, I know we've probably had some questions on why the counselor is, is resigning and didn't run again. It's because when we appoint somebody to fulfill an unfulfilled term, we do ask them that they not use that incumbent status as a means for running for reelection. And even though Councilor Begley, I believe his heart was, he would, he would rather have stayed here, but he, he's a man of integrity, kept his word, and I think we'll see him back on a ballot, maybe even sometime, somewhere, so, so we appreciate it. All right? I think that's it for the Mayor's Agenda. We'll move on to the City Attorneys.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Is that all you had? All right. We do have a lot of business items to get through. The first one up is the final reading on the three urban service districts and the three business improvement districts.
No approval?
It's ready for a vote.
Motion Second to approve item one. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, that's approved.
All right. We've got a number of zoning public hearings. The first one up is application of Mr. Rodney Milner. I see him in the audience. This would change 1720, 2830, 44, Warm Springs Road, 1818 Spring Circle, from neighborhood commercial to general commercial. Mr. Milner, just stand by, let's see if any questions around the table or the audience.
I don't see any.
Okay. We'll take a vote. If you wanna come up, you can, but nope, there are no other questions. We will bring that back on July 9th, 9 o'clock meeting for a vote. Appreciate you being here. Next zoning item is 3711 Hamilton Road, going from general commercial to residential multifamily. Mr. Espinoza here. All right, any questions around the table on that one? Don't see any other hands, so we'll bring that back July 9th for a vote. Thank you. Next zoning item is 5617 East Side Drive, going from single-family residential to general commercial. This is Mr. McCagren. Are you, is he present? Okay. Mr. Fields is here. Any questions around the table on that one?
No, sir.
All right, don't see any other hands. We'll bring that back July 9th for a vote. Thank you, Mr. Fields. The last zoning item is the Harland Price petition, 5470 Chicago Road, going from light manufacturing to general commercial for banquet hall use. Mr. Price here. All right? Sir?
I'm, I'm the owner, Mr. Price.
Okay. Mr. DeFrault?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, Mayor, around the table?
No, sir.
All right, I don't see any other hands. Mr. DeFrault, we'll bring that back July 9th for a vote. 9 o'clock meeting on July 9th. Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Next, we've got the public hearing on the renewal for 10 years of the Business Improvement Districts downtown Columbus. Mr. Wolverton is here from Uptown. This is a public hearing, so let's see if we got any questions around the table or in the audience.
Don't see any around the table.
Okay, this will run through December 31, 2034, and they have met the statutory requirements for asking for a renewal. We'll bring that back for a vote July 9th. All right, we've got the school district levy assessment collection of taxes for the public school system at 23.075 mils. Are there any questions about that? This is an annual levy for the school system. And the clerk, I'm sure, will get their final number certified, but right now on the table is 23.075 mils. Any questions? All right, we'll bring that back. I'll call on Councilor Huff. Now, this is to amend the ordinance regulating coin-operated amusement machines. There's a limit of six at each business location. This would allow a grandfather of a use, as long as no violations have occurred and no revocation proceedings. But, Councilor Huff, you wanna comment on that?
Councilor Turner here.
Okay. Thank you. This came about, we had an ordinance passed last year, I think it was, controlling coin-operated machines in the stores. And I had a group of business owners to come to me to say that in most of what we do where alcohol sales are concerned, that we have a grandfather clause. And this particular ordinance didn't have a grandfather clause for what they needed to do. So, in reference to a church, a school moving into the area. So, if you were an owner and you had been in business one year or 20 years, we were having, we would be having regular inspections. And if, for instance, you had someone that really didn't like you, they could come in and start a church within 50 feet of your business and close you down. So, the stores have contracts with Monster Gaming and Georgia Lotto that they sign, either one, five years, 10 years, whatever. But if, in case it, it ends early, they have to pay a, a fine for ending it early. So, anyway, the way this was to be fixed was, we talked about it, and we would have it set up whereby they would have quarterly reporting, if I remember correctly, correct me if I'm wrong. Quarterly reporting, everyone that's in business would be grandfathered in. And we set the dates and the parameters, because they had some complaints of, when we passed the ordinance, they didn't find out about it until they came in to renew their licenses. So, we had to figure out how to include those that inadvertently... So we had to figure out how to include those that inadvertently did not know. And we restricted the number of games in the store to six games. So those that had more than six games, uh, reported that to Georgia Lotto and they were amenable to it. So they took out all the extra games. And for everything I can see now, I've been working with uh, Councillor Kogle and Councillor Tucker, with original sponsors and original ordinance. And I, that we all met uh, with uh, Deputy City Manager Hodge, the City Manager, uh, Finance Director Angelica, um, and then we had uh, Deputy City Attorney Lucy Scheft. Am I missing anyone that was in the room? Uh, then we had the store owners and those of interest. So I think we've come to a place and time where they are happy with what we're trying to do. Uh, the additional fees they suggested to her, us, if they are to pay an annual inspection fee, it would be better to just include it in their business licenses as they come in. And that way they wouldn't have to worry about it. And as far as the quarterly reporting, um, it will work better than the monthly reporting because they say it's just a way of their accountants, you know, keeping up with things, but quarterly would be uh, enough to get it done. So basically, in a nutshell, we are making sure that they have a grandfather clause, so none of the bus- existing businesses get hurt in this deal. And then all other businesses coming in, if a church or school or any named uh, entity that's prohibited from you opening with gaming, if you come into the area after they have moved in, you cannot have gaming in your new store. Thank you.
All right, uh, Councillor Tucker, do you have something?
Um, yes. Uh, City Attorney, can you give the parameters of what the ordinance? And, and I want to give some historical data in reference to this. Uh, I'm trying to see exactly when I had initially brought it. And I appreciate uh, uh, City Attorney Lucy Scheftall for helping me craft the original ordinance and learning just recently that um, it was some, I guess, when you sign a contract, you sign a contract for three, five, ten years, and we, we did not see that when we originally started this ordinance. So to make sure that we do the proper thing, it is to grandfather the individuals in, but I do want to make sure that the um, the restrictions are actually mentioned because one of the things that people said is that they did not know once we approved this last year.
Well, the main restriction on the number of machines is six. It's limited to six at any business location. And this ordinance was effective July one, twenty twenty-three. And what's being added today is the quarterly reporting. And despite the distance restrictions that were already in the ordinance, the business licenses, uh, unless they've had violations or are subject to revocation proceedings currently, they will be allowed to renew. Uh, and this is a grandfather clause put in, similar to what's in the uh, alcohol regulations in Chapter Three, so. You got any, anything you want to add to that?
It was a distance. Was it a hundred? I can't remember what the distance was.
A hundred yards of a church building, two hundred yards of a school or a school ground, and a hundred yards of any alcoholic treatment center or within a hundred yards of any housing authority property. That's been in the ordinance and it's still there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any more comments on this?
All right. We'll bring that back on July ninth for a vote then, Mayor. Okay, the next item up is the first reading of an amendment to the General Government Pension Plan and the Public Safety Pension Plan. This was considered by the Pension Board at a special call meeting last week. They took no action on the matter. This is uh, a proposal from Councillor Davis that would allow retired city employees, general government or public safety, who are receiving a pension benefit already, uh, if they are appointed or elected to the Columbus Council, they can continue to receive their city pension and will not have to suspend it, which the current ordinance provides a suspension of that pension. Uh, Councillor Davis, uh, you want to comment? It's up for discussion, questions around the table or anybody in the audience that wants to be heard?
There we go.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a couple of brief comments. I think it's pretty uh, simplistic in the way it's been crafted. It's uh, it's been put together by the Pension Board Attorney that came up with this option because there's a lot of us that had concern that we learned about at the, at the last minute. And um, I remember the days I'm playing on the ball field that, you know, you, you learn and you progress by making, uh, by making mistakes. I think we made a mistake here unknowingly, but it uh, it, it came to the surface when an appointed uh, candidate all of a sudden received a letter that said that his pension was going to be suspended immediately. And of course, all chaos break, broke loose then, especially when you're, you, you've served the city for such a long time and then you, all of a sudden, you can't make ends meet and it uh, it affects your uh, your living circumstances and how you're going to support it. We've only experienced this once, uh, and it was with a, the mayor, but I don't think anybody really realized at that time that Mayor Wetherington, he, he knew about it on the front end. Uh, it wasn't an issue to him. He had a plumbing supply business. He had several rental properties. He had state pension. Uh, he really didn't miss it. And then you can also make the case that when you're under full salary, the, the pension that you receive and you're under full salary is too different. Usually the pension is far less than a, than a full salary. So um, I don't think anybody really thought about it at that point. I think there was one other council member that was a city employee, Billy Watson at the time, way back. Uh, that might have been thirty years or so. And probably this amendment or this policy didn't really apply back then as well. But uh, we've looked into it and making a minor change. And uh, what, what I've found out is that we've somehow disallowed a class, a class of people not to be able to serve their community in so many circumstances. Mainly, most of those people just cannot uh, afford to uh, make ends meet as uh, and, and trying to provide for their families and then give that up to come do community service. And that's just not, it's not a, a good thing. And so I think what we're doing now allows good people. We've got good quality people with experience, uh, knowledge. Uh, you can make the case that they understand this city more than anybody, just working here day in and day out. And if the citizens choose that they're the right candidate, I think they should be given that opportunity. And this will open that door now that all citizens, uh, and it's not just city employees. I think it's the water work, anybody that's part of that pension plan. I think the, correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe the hospital authority, uh, some of those members, whoever's in that pension plan will, will now be able to uh, to serve and collect their pension and um, you know, it's a small stipend what this council makes. It's true. From the heart, community service, I think a lot of us would say that it pays for our cell phone bills and our gas to get around and that's about it. Uh, but uh, I'm, I'm, this is not, I guess my name's on here, but I think this is the reflection of a lot of my colleagues have stayed at the same thing and then we're presenting it and, and uh, I think it's uh, the right thing to do. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. All right, I think I've turned everybody's off, so if you would, kind of re-enter so I can get everybody in order here. You're gonna have to wail and cue that Councillor Huff.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I sat in a little bit on the meeting the other day and a concern was brought up, and I'm still concerned also about the fact of if you are an employee of the city government and you retire and you decide to run for one of the other positions, elected positions, tax commissioner, municipal court clerk, uh, any of, any of our elected positions, how, how would that work for everybody else? Because a pension plan is probably the fairest of everything we have left in the world. It does not discriminate against anybody in the plan. So I'm trying to figure out how do we carve out just for council? If we can work it out for council, that's fine, but what happens when um, our clerk of council retires one day and she decides to come back and run for an elected position? Uh, will she be included in that also? That's my question.
Okay. What else have we got? Councillor Begley?
I, I wasn't in the meeting, so I want to provide my understanding and let someone confirm it. So when, when I was asked, why is this just focused on city council? Uh, my answer was, one, city council's a bit different because it is a part-time role, uh, even though it's defined as full-time in the pension plan, a- and two, we've got a bit of urgency here. And so I think the, I, I, I think it makes sense for the pension board to review from a holistic, comprehensive point of view. Uh, but while they do that, I think we could go ahead and, because time is of the essence for the city council role, make a change for this specific city council and have the pension board review overall, uh, and come to us with a more comprehensive solution that addresses all elected official office, offices. Is that?
And, and I, I'm just, I'm, at the pension meeting, it was sort of res- resolved that the pension board felt like this is more of a political issue than it was an actuary issue. So they kind of pushed it back out to the political arena, uh, which is this, which is this council. So they, they will not be picking that back up again.
But the point about it being a unique elected official office because it's part-time, I think that is why this is really carved out just for city council.
And I'm still trying to get to a point. Can anyone answer, up here can answer the question about the fact we have an election coming up in two years. So if anyone in our building-
City Attorney may be able to-
Decides to run for office in two years after they retire, how's it work?
Well, the way it'll work, if this ordinance passes, it's narrowly drawn and will affect only those appointed or elected to the city council. Uh, if they, if they are a retired city employee, they can continue to receive their city pension and it will not be suspended. And the law lets this body, the legislature, make such a classification for councillors only. Um, if there's a rational basis for doing it, and in this case, arguably there is, because this is a legislative body with a part-time, arguably part-time salary, even though they're treated full-time members of the pension plan. And with that said, if this passes in the future, if the council or the pension board wants to consider broadening that to uh, all appointed or elected positions, that's something they can consider, but they'll have to take in what the actuary says about how that might affect the pension plan in the future. The actuary said this is uh, basically a, a neutral impact or possibly even a cost savings impact, so there's no significant effect at all on the pension plan assets. If they want to broaden it in the future for other officials, that's something that everybody and the actuary can consider in the future.
Well, I, okay. I understand the urgency here and what we're trying to do as council. I'm just trying to understand outside of city council. If any employee is retired and they decide to run for tax commissioner or the sheriff retires or the municipal court clerk retires, superior court clerk retires, and anybody that's retired from our government decides to run for any of those seats, how will they be treated? That's all, that's my question. So if we do it for city council, will we come back and do it for everybody else? So.
You could.
You could. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I think, yeah. Councillor Davis?
Yeah, Mayor. And I, and honestly, that's, understanding the question, Councillor Huff, I did want to say that this amendment was the option that's drawn up by the pension plan attorney. So they've really looked at this uh, in detail and they're the professionals. The actuarial actually said that uh, this would not impact the uh, the pension plan. It was neutral. Matter of fact, he said this amendment would actually save a small savings in the uh, in the pension fund. So that's a positive. I think the difference in what we're talking about here, as far as other elected officials, is that i- i- it's the salary. It's the full salary and benefits that they make. I think it was stated that the coroner makes sixty. Actually, the coroner makes eighty. That would be the lowest. But you've got some individuals that are almost three hundred thousand dollars, plus three hundred thousand dollars, plus benefits and, and uh, uh, retirement that go along with that. And then moving into another matter where you're making a full-time salary and most all of them are going to be over eighty-five to ninety-five, plus benefits, even higher than that, depending on the situation. The argument is that those individuals are making far more than the pension that retirees draw, far more. Um, in this case, the people, the class of people we're talking about, if they want to serve on this council, they would be taking a, they would be losing money to the tune of ten, twelve, sixteen thousand dollars a year. Who's going to do that? Nobody's going to do it. They can't make ends meet. But if you get a salary where you're making eighty-five, a hundred, a hundred and fifty, I, I, I think that's far more than what we're talking about as far as being able to hang on to your pension and survive that you earned working thirty, thirty-five, forty years for the city and at the same time be able to contribute. That's the difference. And I don't know if you really want to open that door because right now we have people in the government working part-time, coming back that were already city employees. They come back and work part-time. They can only work so many hours a week and they still keep their pensions. And I think what you're going to run into is somebody making full-time salary and collecting their pension. You're going to have to start building the case. I don't think it's going to be recommended by the, the legal counsel that why wouldn't you allow a former employee to come back and take a full-time position in another area? And keep their salary and keep their pension salaries as well. So that, that opens up a whole new area that, that really needs to be deliberated, but I don't think there's going to be a recommendation because then I think it's going to have some real impact to the uh, uh, to the pension fund, a s- a real impact to the pension fund. And um, you know, and then the optics of individuals that might run for the next go-round for a city position. Are we setting the table for them, for their benefit? That's an optics and that's a reality that could happen. So I think you got to be really cautious in how you move forward. In this case, it's opening the door to a class of people who have served our city well, who have experience, knowledge, that they need their pension, but they want to serve as well, but they can't because they can't survive without their pension. So I think that's what we're doing. And it's, it's just, it's simple, but it's the right thing to do.
Councillor Huff?
I sat in the meeting and I understand there's no impact to the pension. Uh, but I think we are basically solving one problem and going down a rabbit hole because we are going to limit the people who can run for public office. So you're picking and choosing. Uh, as long as they're running for city council, then we're fine. But any other elected position, they uh, in my opinion, everyone that has a pension needs their pension, regardless of how much it is, because they have done budgets based on income that they have in their household. So I'm just, that's, that's what's on my mind. I'm not, basically, I understand we need to move and fill a seat and move on so we have a full board. But again, I say we have an election in two years. And if anybody out here retires in two years' time, they will be receiving a pension. And at that point in time, if they come to us to ask the question, I'd like to run for one of the available seats, you know, do they have to give up their pension to run while the person on city council is still able to receive a pension? So I just, just brought it up because it was brought to my attention that uh, we have a lot of talented- Talented people that have been with this government for twenty-five, thirty-plus years. And if they wake up one day and want to run for one of these seats because they just decided they wanted to serve their community. How do we not allow them to run when we've done it for city council? Thank you.
Yep, thank you, sir. All right, I think we've got some people in the.
Mr. Mayor, I did.
Okay, Mr. City Manager?
So Mr. Mayor, as you know, I'm a member of the pension board. And the pension board did meet last Thursday, June thirteenth in a special call meeting. To discuss the proposed ordinance. I do not believe the minutes of that meeting have been transcribed yet, so I think those minutes would address. Some of the questions that have been asked about the impact on the pension board, whether it's. Running for city council or whether it's running for some other position and maintaining your pension, I believe. The actuarial said that there would be, either way, there would be no impact on the pension in either situation. But I'm requesting the minutes of the special call meeting of the pension board on June thirteen, twenty twenty-four. Regarding the proposed ordinance that's on first reading today. I'm requesting that those minutes be incorporated into the clerk's record. As my comments today on the proposed ordinance, and so. I think those minutes are important to be incorporated by reference. Because we don't have them yet, so I'm asking that those minutes from the pension board meeting. On that date to be incorporated by reference into the minutes of the clerk regarding this proposed ordinance on first reading.
It's a reasonable request, we'll do so, Madam Clerk.
Then other questions at the table, we can open it up, see if anyone wants to comment, Mayor.
Give me your name and address, please, Mr. Broadwater.
Turn that light on, Mr. Broadwater, I apologize. Just till it, just till it turns green. Yeah, let me try that.
Are we good? Martin Broadwater Senior, three thousand four, Slipper Rock Court, Columbus, Georgia, three one nine zero nine. Let's kick the ballistics in and be real, let's be transparent, city council. We know why this ordinance is produced. It's produced because the perception is getting another vote to go your way. Let's, let's be transparent. And the person that prayed this morning actually confirmed what I was going to say because she said. A city counselor. Gives up of themselves for others. Now, if you ask me right now, Mr. Broadwater, give up your retirement, give up, give up, I'm not running. I'm not going to let you appoint me. Because that is, as Counselor Davis said, that's how that appointee makes their living. But when you give up yourself for the people. And you truly mean it, that's what you're going to do. Now, what I'm concerned about is the legality of this ordinance. I sit at these city council meetings. And I go out, when you go in executive session, and I come back in. And I hear no vote taken, however. There is a settlement of a hundred and some, a thousand dollars for someone that I have no idea what went on. I am very concerned about the money that we spend on those settlements and I got a feeling that this one is illegal. Can't prove it yet. But I got a feeling that this ordinance, we're going to have a problem with. Now, why do you think, I said in the entire pension board meeting. Why do you think the pension board wouldn't touch it? Because they knew. Even though the attorney said it's okay to do this. But the pension board themselves would not touch it. And usually, according to robust rules of order. When someone takes no action, there's a reason. There was no motion to accept it or pass it, there is a reason. So when you're, and this is the first call meeting of the pension board in five years. Think about that, counselors. The first called meeting in five years. So I just actually think about it and I, in the military, I served as a, as an EO, EOA, that's Equal Opportunity Advisor. Where I advise generals and post commanders on things. A person's perception is their reality. No matter what you say, you tell me it's raining. And the sun's out, the sun's out. If I feel heat. What I'm trying to explain to you here. It's not about the ordinance, it is about the appointee, it's controversial. So I just want to make sure that we understand that. Your authority is granted by our charter. I would humbly say our charter founders wouldn't ask you to recommend someone so controversial. You have to create, that you would have to create a new law to put them in. Something is inherently wrong with that. I believe even if it's legally right, it's ethically wrong and morally wrong. For you to put someone, appoint someone that.
Turn it, I'm coming.
I didn't do it.
There we go, no, I did it.
Okay, no problem, Mr. Mayor. So I didn't think I had a time limit here right now, though.
You're good.
So I would ask that you think about this. Now, I want to close with something that I read ten days ago. Of someone who I respected, his name was already mentioned. Someone that I revered. Someone that I truly revered, I think he was the greatest politician in Columbus. That's Jim Wordington. I'm going to set the scene for you here, you see, Jim Wordington. I got to call him the honorable mayor, Jim Wordington. Because this man gave up his pension for the people. He was for the people and I just want to read a couple of things to you. He was the sixty-seventh mayor of this city. Something that he said just hit me and it stayed with me, I'm going to set the scene, this is at a press conference, October fifteenth, two thousand nine. And he had served one term. But he was so popular that polls said if he ran again, he would win overwhelmingly. No problem, sixty-seven percent folks in this city said they'd vote for him again, I see why now. This is what he said, and I quote. When the history of this administration is written. I hope it can be said that Jim Wordington was a mayor who listened to the people. Respected differing viewpoints. Took responsibility for workings of the city, government. Was accountable to the people. And left Columbus a better place than he found it. Unquote. What would be said if you appoint this person, you vote him in. Two years, a year from now, this ordinance goes to court and is overturned. And someone is standing right in front of you telling you that it's illegal. Think about it, just think about it for a second, I want to read one more thing and I'm going to sit down. Mayor Wordington was a great man, he gave almost fifty years to public service of his life. That's someone I have to honor. That was, he served thirty-six years on the police department. Final years was as chief, he was a state, he was on the state board of pardon and parole for three years and served four years as a commissioner of the jury department of corrections. Here's something else that I found phenomenal. There was a major of the police department at that time by the name of Lynn Miller. He made a statement, and it just, it resonated with me, he said, I quote. Wordington, I mean, he says, whether he was chief or mayor. He was accountable to the people. Accountability is what we're asking. If the pension board would not touch this, that's reason. Because all the pension board had to do was just vote it up. Throw it in your court, now you have everything to stand on. Because the pension board said, okay, you're good. But if they wouldn't touch it, there's got to be a reason. It has got to be a reason they wouldn't touch it and those are folks that you appointed. And I know for a fact that some of you have called them because they've called me. All I'm asking you. This ordinance is dangerous. For the Columbus, Georgia. This ordinance is going to create some problems that we don't want to have. I say that to you now, it's your decision. But please think about it. Consult, I tell you who you need to call, tell you who I call, Secretary of State Office. You need to call them right now. And get the understanding that what we're doing or what you're doing here is legal. Please, or the city is going to hurt, God bless you.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to again say that what we're dealing with is a matter, it's an amendment to the current policy that's. Part-time versus full-time, that's what we're dealing with in the difference. I too was at the pension board meeting and actually I don't mind telling the citizens how this all came about, actually. The call meeting was recommended by the mayor, I think the mayor pro tem, there might have been some others that. When we mentioned it, that we've got, this needs, this is not right, this is just not right for a class of people. And our citizens that cannot provide for themselves, you can make a case really, it'd be real easy, I can, I can do it, I can provide for myself, but I can name ten people that can't. And that's not right, when you have a class of people that's being somewhat, you can make the case it's being discriminated against. All because they just can't make a living, when you've got a full-time salary. Making eighty-five plus thousand dollars, well over a hundred in these positions we're talking about, other elected positions. I think you'll be able to make it, that's far more than the pension that these people collect, far more, that's the difference. But I was at that pension board meeting and two things, two points, one. This council didn't draw up this amendment, the legal pension board attorney from Troutman Pepper. Put this together and determined that it's legal, okay, that's what you do, you go to legal to put all this together. It's, it's a simple amendment, the pension board did not rule on it because it was one lady there that was well-versed in the pension plan and human resources. And that individual on that board said, you know what, I don't even know why we're hearing this, I don't even know why it's in front of us. We don't deal with these things, we deal with the structure of the pension board, the investments, the integrity. The stability of the pension plan and that's what she said, she said this is a legislative matter, is what she said verbatim. A legislative matter and that she didn't think that they ought to vote on it because they just were hearing it. And that they should send it back to the council because that's the council's job, it's not political, it's a legislative decision that. This council has authority to amend, adjust, create ordinances, that's what we do, that's our. World that the responsibility of the charter gives us, so. That's what was said and they chose not to vote on it because they just didn't think that it was appropriate for them to make a decision on it. And that's what I heard them say, there might have been an individual that objected to it or denied about some things, but. For the most part, that whole board, I listened to all of them that commented, said that, you know. That's not what we deal with, we need to send it to the council because whatever council feels, they're going to do it. Whatever they think is right anyway regardless of what we say and that was how the discussion went, I think it's on video somewhere, I mean, it was open to the public, the whole meeting was open to the public, so. I just want people to understand that, that we follow, this council followed at the request of some of the people at this table, asked that it goes, go through a process. So we agreed to do that in good faith and transparency, we sent it back, that's what they said, now it's back in front of us on, on first reading, so. Mayor, I just wanted to make clear for the record that. You know, we've gone, we're taking the right steps, we're going through the right process as we deliberate and move forward with this.
Well, thank you, and the only thing I'll add is I think it is good that we're going to have the minutes added because there's some other comments made there as well and I think some of them had to do with the. The little amount of time that this, this board was given to try to make something happen and I do agree that anytime, anytime this council. Even looks at that pension, it needs to go to the pension board, whether or not they determine it's under their purview or not because. One minute change in that pension board can cost millions of dollars to this, to this government, so we'll continue to do that. We've got. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. On the May ballot, there was someone running against Ms. Tucker on the ballot, who was a retired police officer. And he would have lost his pension also and so we would have, if he had happened to win. We would have been here anyway because we would have wanted to do the same thing for him because the citizens had spoken. And had, you know, if they had elected him. We would want for him to have the same opportunity to serve and not lose his pension and so. We're, we're here because something has been pointed out to us and it would have affected him too. And so I'm just curious, here I see you shaking your head, you would want us to do that for him, I would think. And so, yeah, you, Ms.
Now, there's no, no, Mr. Broadwater, no interaction, no interaction from council.
So that's what we're doing, we're, we see, we see there's an issue and we're trying to fix it.
All right, thank you. Yes, we've got one other individual, you, you can't, you've already spoken.
Hi, my name is Jalen Smith, resident sixty-four, thirty-two, old post court. I rose to say that this is absolutely, this proposed amendment is absolutely the right thing to do. Ladies and gentlemen, we're talking about someone. Who's, their pension is thirty-something thousand dollars. And we're asking them to give it up to make twenty thousand dollars. That's not right. All the other elected official offices, as has been stated, pay much, much more than anybody's pension. So that's what's at issue here, is that you don't go backwards in your pay. The meeting of the pension board was absolutely a farce. As there is a member of the pension board who. This directly affects his job as one of his bosses. They're doing everything they can to stop Mr. Hickey from serving on this council and we are aware.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, just states your name and your address.
Good morning, everybody, Danny, Aaron Sevia, ninety-one, twenty-five, Garrett Lake Drive, Mizzlin, Georgia, three one eight two zero. I'll be very quick, I have zero point zero stake in any of this except for a citizen that votes when the election comes up. I realize that it's a, it's a privilege to be able to run for office. Not only are you giving up all your time and your cell phone, your email goes off all day long, it's a privilege to be able to run for office. And if you've put yourself into, if you find yourself in a financial situation where you can run for office, then that's, that's a blessing, right? And so, in my opinion, if, if I were to take this room and, and swap it, and let's say it's somebody out here has worked for thirty years for the city and they wanna sit in one of those chairs and they wanna serve their, their community, how in the world are we gonna take that money away from them? It, they've earned it. Pensions, running for office, have nothing to do with each other. There should be a solid line because pensions are sacred. You've earned it. If I was eighteen years old, hypothetical situation, eighteen years old and I, I wanted to join the army, thirty-year pension, thirty-year retirement, then I wanted to be a mailman, another thirty years I gave up. I worked very, very hard every day. So now I got two pensions, but if I wanna run for president, I gotta give them both up? No, thank you. I've worked for that. And I believe that's the way it should be. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Good morning. I am retired sergeant, very proud to be of CPD. My name is Karen Gaskins, forty-five, forty Sears Road. Y'all are talking about me. So I needed to say some things. And y'all can first just totally relax because I did not bring my seven-hundred-and-fourteen neighbors here with me today like I did the last time I come to see you. I first wanna thank all of y'all because you have been attentive to District One. You have returned our phone calls, our texts, our emails, even though you may not have agreed with something I've said to you, you've at least answered them and I wanna thank you for that. But this morning, we're talking about something else. I'm not representing Sears Woods. I'm representing myself. I spent thirty-five years as a detective, senior sergeant in the detective division, working homicides, rapes, child molestation, missing persons, armed robberies, burglaries, financial crimes, you name it, I did it. Everything except, um, ID, wasn't into that. But I've heard numerous remarks about Chief Wetherington. Someone said that to me and I, I kinda said, really? We don't own businesses in Columbus. My husband's retired Air Force. I'm a retired cop and yes, we live on our pensions. That's what pays our mortgage, that was, pays our utilities. We've also lived in a house and have paid property taxes in this community. I have for forty years, my entire adult life. And so I feel like every citizen should have a right to run for office. I should not be penalized because I feel like I wanna give back to my community. I didn't get involved in law enforcement to become the chief. I didn't get involved to become an administrator. I got involved because I wanted to be that frontline person and help people in a crisis in their life. And Chief Born would get on to me because he, he was gonna make me run for lieutenant, compete for lieutenant, because he wanted me in the administration. But I wanted to be there when the bad things were happening to our citizens so I could help get them through that. So here's another time that I have an opportunity to serve. I have been approached, ever since I retired in twenty-fifteen, about running for, for an, an office, for specific city council. But for me, my pension is thirty-eight thousand. I would be one of those people, Mr. Davis, I would give up sixteen thousand. And we're not saying lose, we're freezing it. We're not losing it, we're not, I'm not giving it back to you forever. It's giving up that money for the four years that I would serve. But I would lose or give up sixteen thousand dollars. Now, Mr. Huff, I'm already on that budget, um, since I've been retired since twenty-fifteen. I know what my budget is every month and I've been living within my budget. So in two years, when I wanna run for mayor and I make eighty thousand or ninety thousand, whatever that salary is, I'm not living on a ninety-thousand-dollar budget now. I'm living within what I make. So I can definitely have no problem freezing my twenty-two thousand dollars would be the difference, I believe. I have no problem freezing that because I'm gonna be making like sixty thousand more. Do you get that? I don't know if everybody understands that or not. It's been said a couple of times, but I'm actually increasing my yearly income because I'm running for another office such as mayor or some of these other offices you mentioned that have full-time pay and, and that matches that. But to be running for an office that only pays twenty-two thousand dollars, um, and I think we all can agree, that is a part-time pay. That is not a full-time job. But when I was talking about Chief Wetherington, he hired me in nineteen-eighty-three and one of the best chiefs I've ever worked with, and I agree with you, him and Shirley are amazing people in our community. But he froze his pension for doubling a salary. So why, why would anyone have a problem with that? But I thank you for listening to me. I just, I just wanna make sure that we understand that police officers, we didn't pick our job to get rich and guess what? We didn't. We knew what that pension was gonna be when we retired. We knew we'd have to rely also on social security because that pension is just a piece of a retirement for us. But I think it's unfair to say that we can't serve because we're not willing to give of ourselves. I've given weekends, I've given Christmases, I'm a hostage negotiator for fourteen years for this city, so while you were enjoying holidays, I'm talking someone off a bridge down here. And I don't regret that. I don't regret any minute that I've served this, this town because it is what I was called to do. But I do think that now I'm not ready for the grave yet and I think I have my mental capabilities, I'm smart enough, I have three degrees, and I think I'm capable of sitting in one of these seats and still working on behalf of my community, as you saw, um, a couple of months ago, when we all came to talk, talk to you about the zoning issue. And I feel like I have something else to offer to the city. But I cannot afford to lose sixteen thousand dollars a year to do that. So I stand in support of you. Again, thank you, you are doing the right thing. And all the talk about being sued, like you say, an attorney drew this up. So it's already, it's already been tested, the law's been tested and the man who knows what he's doing for the pension board wrote this and devised this. So I don't see that it is meant for any one person, as you have been accused of, you're doing this for Byron, uh, which I support a hundred percent Byron Hickey. I've known him and worked with him on homicides, we've worked the streets together, he's an honorable man. And, um, it's not just for him, it's for me too. And how many, how many city employees do we even know, retirees, that would run if this was not an issue? We don't know. So I'm asking you, continue forward, do the right thing and, uh, I'll see you again in two years. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Gaskins. Oh, you're waiting on me.
All right. Any other comments around the table? I don't see any hands in the audience, Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Huff?
Yes, ma'am. Mrs., is it Karen Gaskins? Is that correct? Is it Karen Gaskins? I just wanna make sure I got your name right. What I'm saying is, I agree with you wholeheartedly about the process as far as how it applies to public safety and others. I'm not about a person. This is not about the person you want in the seat, for me. This is about only the process of every retired employee running for a seat. I understand budgeting, but let's just say, you wake up one morning and you wanted to run for one of the seats that would pay you a hundred thousand dollars. Okay? Yes, you have more money coming in, but if you are allowed to keep your pension also, you may be able to take better vacations, you may be able to do things for your children, you may be able to do other things. That's what I, that's all I'm saying. It's, my, my deal here is not about the seat we're trying to fill right now. I'm just looking at the fairness of, a pension program has always been fair to all. And that's all I'm looking at. When we finish doing this, if we carve out something, I just wanna make sure it's fair to the people coming in and the future of the people who want to come in. That's, that's where my head is right now. It's not about that seat. I'm okay with what's going on over there. You know, that's been taken care of. But it was mentioned earlier, uh, I'll save that to the end because I'm gonna close out with that. We had some conversation about the fact of, um, I think, I think I received an email from you, but I wanted to say, based upon what I think I got, um, a lot of people up here have supported you all on your personal project out there. And I personally gave my consent way back when. So you know what I'm talking about. So, uh, so you know, the council basically supports that. And then the issue of Troutman Pepper's coming up this morning and has nothing to do with this, but Troutman Pepper's came up this morning about the pension board and they gave credence to this, okay? But has nothing at all to do with this. But Troutman Pepper's was also involved in another issue we had. And they also came down with an opinion. And it's still spreading around. And the only reason I'm bringing it up this morning is because I think it was you or somebody in your neighborhood that sent me a message that we have monies missing and there are no monies missing. I've said this over and over again, the same law firm, the same law firm that says this pension is fine, is the same law firm that says, we have money in the bank, we have uncollected funds that we have an opportunity to get, and we have a third part of money that we lost because of time. So I just want you to know, the same law firm gave the opinion on that when they came, is the same law firm that's saying this is the right thing to do. So when I'm talking and everything, it's about the fairness to the people. This whole room, it's, how do you spend other people's money? That, that's my opinion. How do you tell a person coming in, since this job pays you more money, you are not eligible to collect your pension? That's where I am on the subject matter. So I'm gonna close out just by saying that it's nothing against an individual. The city councils are gonna move the direction they need to do. And it seems as though they're probably looking at carving out something to make that happen so we'll have a ten-person board and we can get business taken care of and District One will have a representative. But I just want you to consider that, my opinion, you and everybody else, I thank you for your service. And I hope one day that you desire to come up here or anywhere inside of the government, you are, you are welcome and you feel welcome. And I'm all about anybody in this room doing the same thing. That's all, that's all this discussion is about, to make sure it's fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. City Attorney?
Okay, if there are no other comments on that, Mayor, we will bring it back July ninth for a vote. The last item we've got, Mayor, is a resolution for about sixteen law firms that were used during the fiscal year twenty-five, depending on the items that come up. It's ready for adoption.
Motion is second to approve item ten. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed? It's approved.
All right. That's all we've got on the business agenda, Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, we'll move into the public agenda. We'll require a little bit of your assistance because we don't have a timer up here, so I'll be using my phone. I'll try to signify you when you've got one minute left and five minutes is it. If you wanna stick around and come back, uh, after the clerk's agenda for an additional three minutes, you'll be, you'll be afforded that amount of time. So we'll start off with Mr., uh, I guess, is it Jose Ruiz? Mr. Ruiz, uh, regarding information on the elimination of parking minimums. I don't see him in the chambers. If he shows up later, he'll be offered the three minutes after the clerk. Next is Mr. Marvin Broadwater Senior regarding the Columbus Charter.
Test one. Good morning. My name is Marvin Broadwater Senior, reside Columbus, Georgia, three-one-nine-zero-nine. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council member. I wish the full council was here to hear this. Because the first thing I wanna do is start off is ask you, those of you that want to vote in, uh, the appointee, have you been to Dunbar Avenue? Probably not. Have you been to Agnes Drive? Have you been to Pete Drive or Glenwood Drive? You see, those are deep in District One. Deep, not just one neighborhood that you'll get calls from, they're deep into District One. Counselor Begley, I'm gonna take thirty seconds and thank you, sir. Mayor said, you are a man of integrity. Every time I called you or emailed you, you emailed me back or you called me. I thank you. We need more like that. Thank you, sir. Once again, I'm here to address our antiquated charter. Our charter should address every challenge, challenging decision you make. But because of our outdated charter, once again, you are faced with a terrible decision that you're probably gonna make on the ninth. This time, over twenty-five thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven citizens of our great community have gone over sixty days without representation in these harlot halls across the street. This body is supposed to be an entity of, by, and for all citizens, including the, the constituents of District One. Our charter should be, as we said in the military, a fluid document. But we elect only to have its contents reviewed every ten years. If this document is to guide our decisions, as we so often refer to it, the review should be at least every five years or every two years to be more reflective of our citizens and their issues and concerns. Believe it or not, the words Fort Benning are still listed in our current charter and will not be up for review until when? Two thousand thirty. Another six years. Now, I was told a few ye, a few, uh, years back, you wanna change the charter, Mr. Broadwater, get thirty thousand signatures. We don't have thirty thousand folks to vote in Muskogee County during the election. So what does that say about our government? We must have ordinances approved because we can't change our charter on a regular basis. I believe every now and then, as a city council, you should be reminded what our charter tells you to do. Not for one neighborhood of this city, but for all. The rich, the poor, the disabled, the veteran, the domestic violence survivor, the elderly, the disenfranchised, the youth. All demographics, all neighborhoods, including the ones on Dunbar Avenue, which I, which I, I, I think about that veteran. You should also be, be representatives of even the homeless. I remember Evelyn Turner Pew used to say, Marvin, I have to work just as hard for the people that voted for me as those that didn't. You all have to remember that.
One minute, sir.
One minute. Thank you, sir. So I'm gonna get through this very quickly and I, I just get to this part of our charter which, which says, your duties and powers. You are to promote or protect the safety, health, peace, security, and general welfare of said government and its inhabitants. Now, I think we've lost that gold. I'm gonna tell you why. Yesterday, yesterday, a forty-one-year-old was killed by gun violence. A fifteen-year-old was ki, was killed by gun violence. Last week, a nine-year-old was accused of conspiracy of murder. We've gotta focus our thoughts and action back on our youth, gun violence. There was a weekend, I saw two city employees ever- There was a weekend, I saw two city employees ever, at a, at a, uh, event that I was at this weekend with, with young kids.
I'm sorry. I'll see you at the end of Clerk's Count.
That, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, next is Mr. Nathan Smith regarding free speech, the charter and council District One appointment. Mr. Smith, if you give your name and your address and we'll get you started, and I'll give you a one-minute heads up.
Thank you. My name is Jay Nathan Smith, sixty-four, thirty-two, old post court here in the city of Columbus, Georgia. Mr. Mayor, council, good morning. Mr. Mayor, we have allowed you to make rules concerning what can and cannot be said by the citizens of the city, although the Constitution strictly prohibits any infringement of free speech. However, Mr. Mayor, you have not applied these so-called rules equally and fairly. A couple of months ago, you had sheriff deputies to escort me out of a meeting simply because I said the word liar in reference to the city manager. Yet, just last week, you allowed many disparaging comments against certain members of city council, our internal auditor, and our newest appointment to this council. You allowed six members of this council to be called, and I quote, "The sanctimonious six." Yet you sat quiet as a church mouse and did nothing nor said anything. What if a speaker was to refer to the other three members of council as the Skid Row Trio? Would you have sat there and said nothing as well? The newest appointment to this council, who is an African-American man, was called a boy. If I were to call you a boy today, Mayor, would you still say and do nothing? Not only myself, but members of the animal rescue community and certain members of council seem to be consistently interrupted, silenced, while others get the privilege of saying whatever they want to, regardless of how vile and misinformed they may be. It is especially troubling to have to watch these council meetings the last few months and to consistently see where a city employee, an employee directly of this council, who is allowed to argue, disrespect, and interrupt his bosses. And, Mr. Mayor, the only thing that you've allowed to happen continually is to allow that, uh, behavior and display and his disregard for this council to continue. Is it indeed proper for an employee, the city manager, to act, to actively work against the directives of this council as a whole? Why does it always seem that in every controversy, every scandal in the city, we can look and see his fingerprints and that he is only a step or two away? Because you have allowed him to go unchecked in the protest against our great police chief, Stoney Mathis, with his name and address on the protest petition. He has continued to work against the decisions of this council. Look no further than the group that sought to remove Ms. Tucker from her seat. Look no further than the one who used her power as a state legislator to try and to usurp authority away from this council and choosing her husband's boss. Look no further than your employee's participation just last week.
One minute, sir.
Thank you. As a member of the pension board, and now he used his position again to stop the seating of our next council person. I hope that you all are paying attention. Mr. Begley, I, I appreciate your service. We always haven't agreed, but you have been very responsive and I appreciate that. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you, sir. All right, and next, Ms. Kathy Tanner, regarding concerns at the CACC. Ms. Tanner, again, you'll have five minutes if you would just give your name and your address, and I'll try to give you notification when you've hit one minute left.
I've gotta start. My name is Kathy Tanner. I'm a lifelong resident of Columbus, Georgia. You're receiving packets with my speech and with examples of ideas. I have some immediate concerns about animal welfare at CACC. The first thing I would like this city done is turning the large Back Bay area into dog runs to alleviate overcrowding because of dog fighting ring dogs that must be housed at CACC as evidence until the trials are done, which is causing the count to exceed capacity and the senseless killing of healthy adoptable dogs. The second thing I would like to see is the concreting in the back play yard area. Dogs need to have a place for regular exercise out of their cramped kennels, giving them time to decompress. This also allows them to deal with fear and anxiety of a loud stressful environment. Regardless of where they have come from or why they're there, they need somewhere to decompress, just like we do. Staff and volunteer availability also impacts the ability of these dogs to be even exercised or walked. There is a very low number of regular volunteers. Uh, we'll tell you that I publicly posted on Facebook last night asking for the community to donate concrete. And I have several people that have contacted me, but they needed an underscore footage. I'm banned from CACC, so I may not go out there. I would need one of you or someone else that could let me know. So they, and they, I have two people that would like to go see it. Third, unused space within CACC turned into a triage surgery rooms to help with immediate medical needs and to be used for neutering Spain animals of CACC before they leave the building. Walker Garrett, whose ear I've bent up one side and down the other, added two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars to the in-house budget for Spain and neutering to reduce the number of surrenders and to help decrease dog breeding. How is this going to be implemented? I want to know how the money's going to be used. I know it is earmarked for Spain and neutering, but there, having an in-house triage surgical room would be conducive to all aspects of animal care. The city council can go out to CACC, see, look at this entire facility, and, you know, plan a trip, do a restructuring. There is so much wasted space there that could be converted into so many things. And I have many of ideas. I just can't get them all in right now. We need vaccinating and deworming upon intake and notifying the public when urgent care needs won't be met immediately and assistance is needed by rescues or the public. So an animal doesn't sit in a run for days with needed medical care not being given. Luckily, my husband does not see my credit card bill because I have to donate at least two to three times a week to a rescue because of an emergency or to a vet clinic to pay for their visit. This is not a wish list. These are bare minimum basics for standards of care in animal shelters. It's past time for animal welfare and our sheltering system to become an important priority in Columbus. I've been told by people that I respect greatly above me that it is an embarrassment. The position of shelter manager at CAC has been vacant for eight months. As of April third, twenty twenty-four, there were sixty applications for this position. I'm unaware of any being interviewed. The volunteer coordinator position has been open as well. Counselor Joanna Cogle asked several times to have that position divided into two, two, two-part-time positions with no outcome or resulting action. Management has cited being understaffed many times to council as an explanation for the basic daily operations of, excuse me, of an animal shelter not being handled.
You have one minute, ma'am.
Shelter management should declare true capacity crisis and put out a public appeal asking for volunteers to accompany the adoption trailer for multiple events throughout the week in addition to weekends, which ironically, I found out last night, is planned. And I'm sure she will be running across the street to pet supermarket where the trailer is, and we will be trying to get dogs adopted. And I will be doing reels. Press releases should go out to the community for transparency. The local news stations should be involved in reaching out to the community, and the city council should be presented with a comprehensive plan and timeline for completion. On behalf of those who cannot speak for themselves, I propose these life-saving suggestions to the city council. Thank you for your consideration.
Ms. Tanner, thank you. Okay, that, um, that completes the public agenda. We'll now move on to the city manager's agenda. If you can get it to green, I can get it. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, got two items, then some purchases, and then I have three updates. First, I've got risk management legal services, um, asking your approval to.
Motion and second to approve item one, the legal services fees. Uh, any discussion on that item? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved.
Next, I've got a Georgia Emergency Management, uh, grant, uh, for Homeland Security, it's fifty thousand dollars.
All right, motion second to approve the GMA grant. Any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed? That's approved.
Next, I've.
All right, we've got a motion second to approve all the purchases. Are there, is there any purchase that any council would like pulled or discussed further? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, Mr. City Manager, if you would walk through those for us, please.
Yes, sir. I've got, um, number A was swim gear and lifeguard accessories for Parks and Rec. Total estimated contract of ninety-five thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-three cents. B was a, is a motorcycle with accessories for the, uh, Columbus Police Department. It's a Holly Davidson, uh, thirty-nine thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. Got audiovisual system for Homeland Security and emergency management, and I see our Homeland Security Director is in the back. Uh, I think this will help him complete his, uh, new, uh, area of work in, in the basement of City Hall. You know, he gave up the basement at the Columbus Police Department, turned that over to the Columbus Police Department for their need. And so we constructed him, um, new space, and, uh, this will allow him to have all of the audio visuals, everything that he needs because all of the other equipment was left with Columbus Police Department. Hundred eighty-seven thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. I've got mold removal and remediation services. You know that we've been dealing with mold at the jail. But, uh, this would also allow this vendor to be used as needed, uh, through the next fiscal, uh, year, uh, fiscal year twenty-five to remediate jail and if needed, any other city location. Got model range, compact theater firearms, training simulator for the sheriff's office. Hundred thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. I do see the sheriff is here. Got, uh, consulting services to assess the cybersecurity posture for our information technology department for this city government. It's a hundred sixteen thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars. Got forensic software for the sheriff's office. It's a hundred thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. And, um, got a bucket truck for our engineering department, hundred forty-eight thousand forty-three dollars. I've got fitness equipment for the sheriff's office. Uh, their new administrative, uh, facility, uh, is almost ready. And, uh, this will allow fitness equipment for, um, for his new, uh, area of work, fifty-six thousand eight hundred eight dollars and twenty-four cents. And then, of course, we did have, um, some things that we were able to purchase, um, right off of, um, off the lot because it were hard to find, uh, items, and we did proceed forward and purchase those things for various city departments, as we've done in the past, and we've talked to you time and time about those things that we, we do to help, um, get that equipment before someone else gets to it. Uh, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna move to the updates and presentations. I've got three. I've got, uh, the first one from Holly Browder, uh, the director of Parks and Rec. And then she will be followed with a jail, a jail update from Director Drell Short, uh, from our, um, uh, contractors, from SLAM, uh, Gilbane and, um, group to talk about the, the jail. Uh, and, uh, and then finally, we'll have a revenue division update by our finance director. So Parks and Rec Director Holly Browder.
Just, just before you get started, Ms. Browder, um, I think we, there goes, I'm sorry. Just very quickly, a point of personal privilege because we, I meant to get this on before we, uh, got into the city manager's agenda because it relates to the, uh, public speaker on, on Columbus Animal Control. I've brought up a, a lot of concerns, uh, that have been brought to me by different animal control advocate, av- or animal rights advocates. And, uh, I haven't gotten a response, uh, from the head of animal control. I emailed twice. I saw her in the audience, uh, so I, I now know she's not on vacation. But I emailed last week, uh, earlier in the week when, uh, Ms. Tanner reached out to me. And also I had a judge reach out to me, said that he was really concerned that our city was gonna have a, a black mark on it. And, uh, this is a very influential judge who, uh, you know, he's not somebody who tries to push around for, you know, thinking we can do the impossible with a budget. But he said that he was really concerned that we needed to, uh, do something about adding some additional space or at least getting out to the public while we couldn't. And, uh, I emailed Director Browder all the time and, you know, it's, uh, she responds back to me even though sometimes the answer is we can't do anything about it or, you know, we need more in our budget. And, uh, and I know she's overwhelmed with stuff to do, and all the directors usually do pretty well. But, uh, I did wanna bring that up because I did send a follow-up email, uh, did not get a response. And, uh, I hate to do that publicly, but it's, uh, it's just necessary because I, I understand if somebody says, hey, sorry, we don't have the budget for it, or I need to look into, look into it. But the city council is the board of directors and, for this city. And, uh, we are representatives and, uh, you know, I, I understand our employees are extremely busy, and I will simp- I will take an email that simply says, I'm looking into something, but when I've got a constituent who reaches out to me more than once, and then I follow up again, I follow up again, and I still don't get a response, that, uh, that is concerning to me. And that's concerning that, uh, you know, whether or not we're going to, uh, get any type of action. And, uh, I just wanted to bring up that concern, but, uh, I will say ninety-nine percent of the employees in our city have been very responsive, even when I do bug them like Holly, because I, I, I'm sorry, I always ha- I always get stuff that I have to ask you questions about, but, and I always appreciate the candor and honesty. And, uh, you know, we will work to get stuff in your budget as we can, but just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
And, and, Mr. Mayor, and let me just say, counsel, I appreciate you sharing that with me at this council table. And, um, and I, I don't know if Director Short is familiar with the, your emailing, but, but I would respectfully request this. If you email a department head or an employee, that should copy me. You know, if you don't copy me, I don't know that you're communicating with one of my employees. And, um, and so, you know, and I know, we don't follow the charter when it says it. The charter says that this council should communicate with employees through the mayor and city manager. That's what the charter says now, but we've never abided by that because we don't, I don't want that. But I at least want to be copied if you're going to email a department head or an employee below the department head so that I'm involved and, and when you email them and you copy me, I'm gonna follow up, as some of you know, and say, you know, Director Short, please respond to this council concern. But if, if, if I'm not in the loop, there's no way for me to know. And so I, I, I appreciate you sharing that with me here, but we can resolve this matter. Absolutely. And I hope every council member will copy me when you're communicating with a department head or someone below a department head. And that way, if you don't get a response, deal with me. And so I appreciate that. And so if you know about his email.
I, I am familiar with the email, and I thought I did respond to you, in which I actually invited you to meet me there so that you could take a. invited you to meet me there, so that you could take a tour and watch it and see the area that you were questioning, because I told the division manager not to respond, that I would respond, and in that invitation, in that response, I invited you to meet me there.
Do you have that email with you today?
I'm looking for it right now.
Well, this, we've got some updates, so let's, Council will get it with you, Dr.
And please share that, send that email to me. Thank you. So we have Director Browder.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager. Just here to give a really quick update, Parks and Recreation, on things that we have going on in Parks and Recreation. First of which, many of you may recall, we are working towards getting a mobile recreation vehicle that will be able to go out into the recreations, into the community. This vehicle will encompass anything that we might have in a rec center, in our facilities, and also when we do special events. So I wanted to bring this to you, because we're super excited about it. We've decided to brand it the Columbus Outdoor Recreation Experience, to give people an idea of what we're doing and what it looks like. So these are simply what that truck will look like, more or less, as we move forward, and so it'll be very recognizable in the community as we go out to events, facilities, any activities that we need to go out to offer, things for the community. So that gives you the side view, this is what the front and the back of the truck will look like, but again, really excited, and it should be very noticeable in the community. As part of that, we also have a trailer that we'll be using as well to haul those supplies in, and this is what our trailer will look like as we go forward. We're going to change out the photos, we want those to be representational of the community, so that's some of the things that still have to be ironed out, but really looking forward to moving forward and having this to be visible out in the community. And I say that because, and here's the front corners and the back, just again, to give you an idea, and what the core logo will look like on everything that we are working on. But I say that because we started this summer, and I came to you a few weeks ago, and we talked about what we wanted to do for summer with community block parties. Well, last week, we got to host our very first one, because the first one was canceled due to rain. These are the type events that this vehicle will go out to and service in the community, and so we want it to be very visible, we want people to know when we're there, who we are and who we represent, and so I just wanted to bring this forward, because we were able to do this last week, and it was a huge success, but not because of Parks and Recreation. You can see all the logos here on the screen and all of our partners, and even as of last week, I think we picked up fifteen more partners, and so they're not even all represented on here, because this is the old flyer from the beginning, but this is really growing with momentum, and the community really appreciated the fact that we came out to Farley Homes last week and set up. These were some early shots, I should have taken some later ones when it was super busy, but we were able to serve forty-three children there in the community, and this is a smaller location, but that's what us going in the community looks like, us being able to provide services and opportunities versus people coming to us. We're just going to take the services to them, and that's what the mobile vehicle is all about. So a huge thank you to those of you around the table who have voted for that and are supportive of that, and to the mayor for being supportive, because it's the mayor's Committee on Diversity and Equity that allowed us to do this, so a huge thank you to him as well. In addition to that, you know that we continue to have our passport to Columbus, want to make sure the community continues to be aware of it. This is something we've done for about five or six years now, and we continue to do so. These are the locations that people can pick those up. We've had several locations that have run out, and we've replenished them, so we know that the community is picking these up and taking them out and using them throughout the summer. So again, anyone who's listening, please visit any of these locations to pick up your passport for your kids here in Muskogee County. It's a great program and a great opportunity for children and families to take advantage of. Next, I'm going to move into our pool updates, and I've actually got David Hawkins, the Executive Vice President for Freeman and Associates. He is here to assist me and answer any questions you all might have. Normally, you all know Mr. Pruitt, Ron Pruitt from Inspections and Codes, usually does these, but he was unable to be here today, so I'm going to do my best, but Mr. Hawkins will be here to answer any additional questions. So you all know that we've been working on the three pools here in Columbus to renovate those. Here's Rigdon Park. These are the most recent photos as of last week, when I turned in my presentation. This gives you an idea of where we are and the status. I can tell you, it looks really, really nice, the colors and things, and the renovations are coming along very nicely, and I think the community is going to be super excited and proud once they see it all come together, but this gives us an idea of where they were as of last week. This is Rigdon Park. Next, I have Shirley Winston. This gives you an idea of what Shirley Winston looks like, and as many people, will they all look the same? Well, yes, they are very, very similar, so the pictures do look very similar in nature, but again, here is Shirley Winston, and where we are with Shirley Winston as of last week, and then last but not least, certainly Salmon Road, and of course, Salmon Road was our latter, our last unit that was being put in, so it's not quite as far along, but still, they are moving along with it as well. And I bring that to attention for the schedule. All along, we've talked about the schedule, and the schedule was very tentative, obviously it was based on a lot of moving factors, one of which is permits and things that we had to go through the Health Department to get, other is rain, and so you can see here all the delays that we have been faced with, or the contractors have been faced with, from four out of five months in twenty-four twenty-four. You can see the above-average rainfall, forty-five days of rain delay, and that they've only had applied for two weeks on these projects in hopes that we can make up time on the weekends, but unfortunately, right now, rain has been a consistent factor. As a result, it looks like the dates are being pushed again because of the rain delays that we've faced trying to get the products done, and so right now, it's going to be that Rigdon gets pushed back to August, Shirley Winston to September, and Salmon Road to October for completion. So we will not make the mark for where we wanted this summer to have them open, even if it was just late summer and on the weekends going into Labor Day. We will not make that just because of the rain that we continue to receive. So that's where we are as far as dates there, and then splash pads, I've showed, I think I've brought this, as well as Mr. Pruitt has, to continue to show you what those conceptual designs look like, and also to give you an update here on the property adjacent at Citizen Service Center. You can see we've gotten the Geotech and surveys, been performed, schematic design in progress. Carver Park, which was another location we're working on simultaneously. We have the new location plan with, near the playground, and we're waiting on Geotech proposals to come back. The third location, which is Britt David, is being proposed. We're trying to locate the underground services, utilities. We're trying to make it less or more cost-effective if we can already have some of those things in place, so we don't have to put them in as part of the project, and then you can see the three remaining at the bottom are still to be determined. Our goal was to try to have the first three planned out and done, and then as we're working on those, then we'll move into the final three, and then to complete all six splash pads for the community as quickly as possible. And that was all I have this morning.
So, Mr. Mayor, I know that our contractor is here, just want to extend an opportunity to him to make any comments regarding the delay, the rain, the situation that we're dealing with, if you'd like to address his body.
Good morning. David Hawkins with Freeman and Associates. The big critical factor that we've had that we were not encountering, any of us, had to do with the Health Department. We were anticipating maybe a thirty to forty-five day period to get a permit. It took us five and a half months, so when you look at that timeframe, that's what's kind of destroyed the whole project. The rain, you know, we've had, we've asked for a two-week extension on the rain, even though there'd been forty-five days, and when you're building a pool, it shuts you down. You can't do anything. So that's kind of the highlights of it, if you have any questions.
Justice Kogo.
The, since we're delayed, I just wanted to touch base and go back to, were we able, ever able to get the funding over to Uptown for the splash pad?
You can turn your mic.
Since we're going to be delayed in opening, if Rigdon's going to be our first, and we're delayed until the end of August.
So the request from Uptown was actually for their playground, not the splash pad, and the city attorney's office is working through an MOU that we'll have to bring back for approval from council on the MOU, but the funding that they had requested was for the playground.
Yeah, it was for the playground, but I was just, just because it's so heavily used because of the splash pad, and if we're not going to be opening on time, it looks like for this summer, I have a feeling that that's going to take even more of a toll, so.
Yes, so we'll work to bring that back in July, so we'll have that.
All right. I don't think we have any other comments. Well, I would like to say one thing, I want to thank the director for this mobile, the core. This has been something that we've been passionate about getting rolling, really since COVID, I mean, since about two thousand twenty, and the exciting thing about this is, in addition to these partners that you've listed on the screen, you saw the food mill, there's also opportunities to partner maybe once a quarter and have a really big neighborhood push with all of the mobile medical units that we have partnerships with, with different hospitals and Valley and Department of Health, so it's really got an opportunity, I think, because of what we're going to do, and we hear from people all the time that there's not enough rec centers. Well, we don't have enough programmers, so this gives us the ability to take a programmer on the road and go to some of the areas that maybe are not accessing some of the rec centers like they should, so we're very hopeful that this will yield some positive impact. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We have, just a second, Councilor Tucker.
Thank you for adding the passport to Columbus for this year. I had one question. I am actually in American Legion Post three-three-three, Patricia Liddell, she wanted to see if we can set up a meeting, that way we can talk about the Veterans Parade a little early. It's been some developments. I was trying to see, one of the veterans was talking about doing some additional stuff, so we want to sit down and talk with you, so we can get a schedule, please.
Sure, if Ms. Liddell or yourself, whomever else wants to be involved, just shoot me an email, some availability, and we'll go ahead, because we actually already start in the summer, because that's just how we do it, and again, I worked on it since two thousand and nine, when Council Barnes came to me originally. That's how we always start, is in June, July, to get us started, because it takes that long, so please, just send me some information, we'll get it scheduled.
That's why I was happy to see you was on the schedule today, that way I could ask, but I'll send an email and I'll link, and Patricia Liddell, and I think it was a couple of other people that wanted to participate in that initial meeting.
Absolutely.
And there is a committee that stood up, and in the process, then, so I'm sure they would welcome more help. I know Leroy Davis has been a sort of a partner in crime with POPS for years.
I think Patricia Liddell was part of that committee, that's why she was asking that question, so, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So next, Mr. Mayor and Council, I've got a jail update. We've been talking about the jail for the last three or four meetings now. I'm glad to see that the sheriff is here and the chief deputy is here, but I've got Drell Short, who, Director Public Works, responsible for maintenance, not just of the jail, but for all city buildings, is just a small portion of her responsibility. But also, we've got Doug Kleppen, Shane Clark with SLAM Collaborative, these are our architects that we are using for the government center and for the jail, as we've been dealing with this, they've been helping us out. We have Henry Painter with Gilbane Building Company, we've got Doug Shaw, Jericho Design Group, LLC, and then we've got Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge, our Deputy City Manager for Finance, Plan and Development. And so we have assembled all of these people, because the jail issue is an urgent issue, and it's a serious issue for us, and it's something that we are going to have to deal with in the immediate, short term, to deal with life-safe, healthy matters, and then in the long term, where we put this issue behind us and we've got a new jail facility. And so they're all here, and Director Short is going to talk about the maintenance and some things going on there, and then the other members of the team will talk about short-term solutions to get us, to build us that bridge, or allow us to have a bridge to get to the point of a new jail, and so I'm going to start with Director Drell Short.
Well, good morning again, and I'm just going to give you a very brief presentation, and really, it's more of an update based on the information that I provided for you at the last council meeting regarding our plumbing cost, the CGL company's maintenance cost, as well as our maintenance recommendation. As it relates to the plumbing cost, since 2022, facilities maintenance has spent a lot of money on plumbing, and this is Benjamin Franklin, I think one of the counselors, was most interested in, but if you look and see Muskogee County Jail alone, we spent over six hundred and twenty thousand dollars from since 2022 on plumbing in the jail. Public safety, this does not include any of the jail costs, was five hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred dollars. That includes all of your fire stations, your precincts, and any other CPD or public safety building. General government, we spent over two-point-two million in plumbing costs for all of our general government buildings. The outside agencies, those are areas like the Health Department, the MRS Service Center over on University Road, we've spent for all of these different agencies, a total of six hundred and twenty-three thousand, four, three hundred and forty-two dollars, which gives a total spent since 2022 of four-point-four million dollars, a little over four million dollars. As you know, we've brought CGL to you before. CGL is a Georgia statewide contract holder for facility maintenances and services. They've got over thirty years of experience in doing facility maintenance, to include preventive maintenance programs. They're currently managing and maintaining over twenty-five million square feet worth of facilities all over the state of Georgia, as well as the United States, and they have over four hundred-plus staff working, not only in Georgia, but all over the United States. Some of the benefits of going with CGL, as I brought before you before, is to provide preventive maintenance and repairs for all building systems and equipment. They can provide energy management, which means improvements. They offer computerized maintenance management and reporting. They will provide onsite staff, route services, as well as emergency services. CGL is currently and has been working locally in Columbus, Georgia, for the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities since 2012, and they've been working at the Juvenile Justice Center since 2000. Again, I can't emphasize enough that by partnering with CGL, will improve our building performance and will substantially reduce our annual maintenance cost. Just to give you a recap of some of the activities that CGL is capable of handling, everything from HVAC units to chillers, boilers, kitchen appliances, fire life safety equipment, generators, water treatment, pest controls, et cetera, et cetera. So we asked for, as a director from you all, we asked CGL to break down the one-point-five million, and they gave us some information. It wasn't exactly what we were looking for to be able to provide for you, but of course, they're not under contract with us right now, so what they provided for us is what I have here right now, and that is that their minimum starting salary for skilled trade positions is thirty-five dollars per hour, that's for, that's based on the current labor market. If they had the higher administrative positions, it would cost anywhere between twenty-three to twenty-five dollars per hour, and of course, their lead roles, like your supervisors, your regional oversight would be your highest-paid employees, but overall, salaries, benefits, and insurance comprise the largest portion of any of their contracts. So in asking them again, because we asked them twice to break it down, this was the second response that they sent us, which was basically that they broke it down in this way. Salaries, benefits, and insurance approximate cost is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. That's just to handle our three buildings. The materials, auto portions, that's your capital, the contract covers everything from vehicles to uniforms, tools, cell phones, preventive maintenance supplies like filters, et cetera, that estimated cost is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Subcontractor cost, that's for your... Subcontractor, subcontractor cost, that's for your life, uh, inspections, your life safety equipment inspections like elevator suppression systems, pest controls, et cetera, is at two hundred thousand dollars. And those indirect costs to set up offices and things of that nature would run about eighty thousand dollars. So if you add those items up, you come to about one point two eight. Again, these are just estimates. We have not gone under contract with CGL, which would be even more detailed, if you will. So based on the information that we gave you the last time, this one point five that we're asking for on the high end will cover Recorder's Court, which is actually a part of the jail, the jail itself. And then, of course, we wanted to lump in the Muskogee County Prison because if we don't start doing some maintenance on that jail as well, we'll be in the same position that we are with this current jail in five to ten years. So we wanted to make sure that we are being able to address the Muskogee County Prison as well as the county jail at the same time. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr., to Pam, who's going to take it from there.
And Mayor and Counsel. You know, we've, we've, I think this is probably the third appearance that we talked about the CGL company. And, um, their own state contract. They have a presence in Columbus, Georgia. I know the sheriff and, uh, architects and others visited other facilities in Georgia. And they were handling the maintenance in those facilities and, and that's how you actually
Actually learned about them.
Came to learn about them because of the, what you saw at those facilities. And so, um, we believe that, of course, they've been vetted because they own state contract. And they're in other facilities all over Georgia and here. And those locals that you mentioned are state facilities.
Correct.
And that's why they are with CGL because that's the state contract. And so, um, we're prepared to move forward with them with your approval. Now, if you want us to do something different when they've been vetted statewide, uh, through the Georgia procurement system, state of Georgia, I mean, we can go and do something else. But they meet all of our procurement criteria. And we're ready to move because it's time to move. We, we just can't keep kicking the can. And so we've been here three times and we'll come back a fourth time and a fifth time if we need to. But we need your approval to move forward. You saw her numbers on what we spent on plumbing, uh, and, I mean, it's we spent four million dollars.
Four million dollars.
And, and six hundred and twenty thousand, I think you said, just
For the jail alone.
Yeah, jail alone. So we're going to have to do something.
Counselor Davis has a comment.
Yeah, I, um, I've had enough time to really try to think through this and, um, and vet through it. I've got experience in this area. Counselor Bagley, you're a numbers guy. Are you leaving? Because you might be interested in this? Well, and look, this is constructive. Okay, it's just constructive. So I'm not challenging anybody. I'm just putting it out as constructive and thinking through this. Last thing we want to do is throw good money out for bad. That's the last thing we want to do. In highlighting that, we've got a tremendous amount of needs across the board in this city. Not just cherry picking this area and looking at this area. And if you read those contracts and how they work, those are base prices. And there's no telling what the end sum's going to be with all the needs that you might have as you go. I really, if, if I'm managing my equity investors, P and L's on an annual basis and looking at this, knowing there's needs. And at the same time, understanding that I may make a transaction soon. In this case, the jail's coming down, in my opinion. It's coming down. It's going to have to. That's a lot of money we're talking about. A lot of money, just, that's, that's annually. A lot of money. I think that we would be better serving the citizens with the needs we have across the board. If we start taking that money and paying the trades, we talked about during the budget that we could only allow so much. Well, I'm going to make that challenge that we can go even higher. With this amount of money that we're talking about, we have the funds to be able to do that. And I'm going to propose building a solid maintenance department. And paying them because their trades, it's almost like public safety now. These are trades that we're going to need, not today, but we're going to need them ten years from now. And we know that maintenance and these things, you have to ask the question, how did we get to this point? We know we need those things. Take this money and utilize it and start getting these people and build it in-house and we would be better served. We did that for a while. Matter of fact, if you look at the history, we had a couple of people there for a while at the jail, two, a couple of people. I heard they did a good job, but they're gone, probably because somebody poached them or recruited them. But with the amount of money you're talking about spending and paying somebody else, I mean, it just doesn't add up that you wouldn't do it in-house and service all the facilities that we have because we've got the judicial building coming on, the sheriff's office coming on. You've got a ton of facilities, I can keep going down the list, that are going to need these people. So why not take this, the financial resources and do that? The other thing is in lieu of that, and I'm going to keep it short, it's just a, a plan. You know, we haven't had any rain for a while. It's been extremely dry. And the jail's still leaking. So that tells me a lot of the issues are internally. They're not the roof, okay? And if you had a roof in a building you're going to take down, you patch it accordingly. But you should, we should look at that at doing it in phases. We should do the bare minimum outside the needs of what the sheriff needs and what he's telling us with the population and all. We should do this in several phases to get us out at least three, four, five years until that building comes down. Because the objective would be to put as minimal of the taxpayer's funds in those buildings, knowing at the end it's going. It's going to be gone. And I don't think anybody has any corner on the market when you come to the management side. Because I've looked into, there's several resources out there that's available that can provide these resources. Specialty temp agencies that are out there. There's even maintenance companies that they've got good quality people, that their people will work part-time. And you may be able to get these people to work for this government full-time, but you're going to have to pay them. Now, go back to the, the jail situation and do it in phases. You get by with doing what you need to do. The mediation and mo, the mediation and, and, uh, 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 keeping track of some of the things that we're dealing with and the environmental issues, that's a must, okay? I'm glad we did that today because that's got to be there. That gentleman took care of a lot of things. And it was night and day from when I went in there the first time and then the second time, but the problem's still there. And you try to deal with those, but you got to deal with it in a way that you, 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 you don't expend all your funds on that. And then go to a second phase. If you need to do a little bit, if you need to paint a wall here and there, if you need to replace something, you can do bits and pieces of this and then go into the third phase. The whole goal would be to bridge you to get to that point when you take it down. Meanwhile, you need to be building a new jail. And then you use your money there. To me, that's the best utilization of taxpayer funds and how we need to look at this. Because even though we do all this, you're going to have to turn around and use additional funds even more to take care of all your other needs throughout our government. So why not use these financial resources and build the maintenance department that you truly need and get these people? And if you pay them, they'll come.
Well, and, and Ms. Mayor, let me just thank the counselor for his comments. And, uh, I had a conversation, I've had a conversation with staff. In fact, I started my conversation about a phased approach two meetings ago. And then I talked about it last meeting when I talked about six million to eight million to start Phase One. Mayor and Sheriff, I see you back there. Uh, did I not have a conversation with you? It sounds like he was listening to my conversation yesterday about the phased approach. Did I not describe what he just described to you yesterday? Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. So we're, we're on the same page with that, the phased approach. I've been talking phased approach for the last several weeks. So I'm glad to hear you say that. And so when I said at the last meeting, we need a budget to start the first phase with. And that's where I asked for six million to eight million dollars. Now, they're going to talk to you about short-term and even with what they're going to talk to you about today, uh, and the number that they're going to put out there, I think it's similar to what I was asking for at the last meeting, the six million to eight million. So, and, so I want to put that out there as we proceed with this update. But the other part, you're talking the same language. And I see Drill, you know what, because Drill has been talking to me. We've been talking about, we are a large enough city that we need a building maintenance department. I think we talked about the school district having a building maintenance department. And so, yeah, we need a building maintenance department, which means another department head. And that needs to be broken out from public works. You know, they've got all of this other stuff from waste collection, street mail, rainwater, you, you go down the line with them. They've got too much on their plate. We need a building maintenance department. So all we need to do is move forward. Because, I mean, you're saying exactly what we've been saying and talking. So I'm glad to hear you say that. Now, we can't build a building maintenance department overnight. And we can't wait to move forward with the short-term solutions. My proposal is that we contract with CGL for one year. While we build that department, determine what the department budget is going to be, determine what that pay range is going to be for plumbers, electricians and all these people, which sounds like you're willing to go beyond where we are now. But we can't build that department overnight. It's going to take a minute. But there's an urgency of now in dealing with the issues that are before us. And I believe CGL can come in and hit the ground running. And I'm talking, you know, maybe one year or less to give us a chance to, to create this new department and build a budget for this new department and recruit employees who, um, are professionals in plumbing and electricians and so forth, carpentry or whatever. Uh, but we're talking the same talk. We just need to pull the trigger and do it. So I'm glad to hear you say that today.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Um, I've asked multiple times about maintenance, not just for these three buildings, but for every building. And so I'm, I'm just curious why we just keep on coming back with just these three buildings. Because, um, part of, the important part of maintenance when it comes to property maintenance is preventative maintenance. And so we, we have, um, we have a big issue in these three buildings. But if we don't do regular property maintenance in the other buildings, we're going to have, um, problems there too. We've already had a couple of problems in the new, um, city hall. And, um, so why are we go, why are we coming with this approach instead of putting out an RFP and getting bids on, from several companies on maintaining all of our buildings as the stopgap before we build internally?
Yeah, well, well, first of all, CGL can do every building that we have.
But that's not what's being presented to us here.
What we're presenting to you has to do with life, safety, health issues. The Recorder's Court building is a part of the Muskogee County Jail. Bricks are falling off the building. We have challenges. And we have got to deal with the urgency of now with these buildings. And, and, yeah, but we, CGL would be happy. They, they would love to do every building that we have. But we've got to start here. And then as we build a building department, um, with a budget, and it's going to be a, a pretty healthy budget. When you look at the number of, what, we have six hundred, how many buildings we have?
If you're talking about occupied buildings, meaning we have staff in them all day, every day, you're probably looking at anywhere between, uh, twenty to twenty-five buildings. That's including parks and racks.
So, but we, we are, you know.
What I'm saying though is preventative maintenance saves money in the long run. If you wait on preventative maintenance on the other seventeen buildings, then you're going to be in this condition on those buildings too. That's why I, that's why I've said over and over and over again, we need to look at an RFP for all the buildings, not just these three that are in a, a bad condition. Because while we're waiting to build the, the department, and which I don't understand why we haven't had one for, you know, before. But that's, that's beside the point. While we're waiting to build that department, if we do not have preventative maintenance on all of the other buildings, then they are going to become like this. It's very important and it saves money in the long run. And that is what we have to get into our mind about the preventative maintenance of buildings, not just taking care of the results of not having preventative maintenance for several years.
Believe me, our people, and I see the building division manager out there, they deal with all of our buildings. And they're doing what they need to do with the resources that they have. We're talking about right now, the urgency of now getting this done at the jail while they continue to do their work on all of the buildings. But when we build a department, we're going to look at every single property, every single building as we build that department. That's why we need CGL or someone now to deal with these safe, life, safe, healthy matters, uh, in this building while we, if you agree, build a department. And, and, um, and that department would, would be built to take care of building maintenance, uh, for all buildings in the city.
Well, we wouldn't need, if I may, Mr. City Manager.
You don't need an RFP if you got CG, I mean, they're on state contract, they'd get an RFP. They did it and they selected from every and any vendor that submitted from state of Georgia, from all over the nation, they selected CGL. They're, they're on state contract. They're doing state buildings, all over the state, state buildings. CGL. They're doing county buildings because they've tapped into them because we can use that resource. So, um, we, we need your support in moving this forward so that we can get things under control with these concerning buildings. And that's Recorder's Court and the jail and the prison.
Where does the funding come from?
It's going to come from the reserve fund. I mean, just like, yeah, that's where it comes from.
Counsel, Counselor Davis?
Mr. City Manager, I don't know if we're connecting here, but it, I get the feeling you're trying to sell me a Lamborghini when all we need's a Ford, okay? And CGL, I don't know, that's an old service corporation. I believe one of those companies, they changed to the acronym, I believe. I'm not sure. But you didn't hear what I said. The phased approach is dealing with the jail and construction of jail. That's a different animal. The management side of it, what you're presenting is just a base. Understand that that could be three, four, five, six million dollars before the year is over with. Before the year is over with, I see that. Because that's just a base. And what I'm saying is, you said life, safety. We have full of fire and, and safety that can come in and do those things. They do it for us on all our buildings. They did it on the government center. It's not just It's not just that they have an exclusive market on the life, safety matters. It's just guy, you gotta make sure it works. But you saw the other additional numbers up there of the amount of money we're paying on top of this contract that most likely will continue. What I'm saying is you're still gonna have those needs. Whether we build the department and they come in and deal with those trades, they're still gonna have to do it. You're just letting somebody that you're paying an enormous amount of money. Oh, it's time and a half on the weekends, by the way. And if they're limited, they're gonna go out and hire somebody else. And, and it's gonna be an enormous amount of money that you're paying a company. You, we can, what I'm saying is, I think we've been getting by. Okay? It's just there's been some things that have been neglected over the course of time that has led to where we're at right now. That's the truth of it. But we can get by for another three years or so, and I think can save a lot more money than what you're proposing on the management side. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
The, the, uh, phase part? Yeah, there's gonna be some money in those phases. But again, you need to focus on the minimal to get you through until the jail comes down while we build a new one. And it should all be done, I mean, timely. Cause time is of essence. The old saying, time is money. That is true in this case.
Thank you.
So that's all I'm saying on the constructive side. And that's where you and I differ a little bit.
Okay. And, and, and that's just my comments on the questions. Sure.
But the body will deliberate. I'm just putting it out there as trying to help my community and save taxpayer dollars at the same time. Cause I know that jail's coming down.
Well, I think we have the same goal, we help our community and save taxpayer.
Don't throw out good money for bad.
I think we have the same goal. We just see it differently.
Okay, thank you.
And so what I want to do is bring up the professionals. This is the professional architect, architectural firm. I mean, we know their credentials. They work all over the country. And I'm gonna bring up, you know, the construction, uh, Deputy City Manager Hodge, once you come and introduce him. And let's see what they've got to say.
So, good morning, Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney. I really want to kind of take a step back and remind everyone how we have this team in place. Back in August of twenty-three, we, um, did an RFP on how we're gonna move forward with the jail. And so we brought onboard both a construction manager and a consulting firm to review the jail, assess the options of the jail, uh, to determine how you move forward. Part of that RFP that was done, we called it phase one of the Muskogee County Jail. And that it was to complete a space planning and programming and schematic design activities. And so that is the, the phase that this consulting team, which is made up of SLAM Collaborative, which, uh, you all know as Doug Cluppin and Shane Clark, Paul Gibson with Barn Gibson Partners. Um, they've teamed together. They've brought onboard, uh, to handle this project with them Doug Shaw, who is a, uh, with Jericho. He is a jail, um, expert and consultant. And then we have Gil Bane, uh, Building Company, Henry Painter, and David Hawkins with Freeman and Associates. So that is our team that has been looking at and assessing how we move forward with the jail. One of the things that we have asked them to do as they've been working on this assessment, this face planning and programming, which we'll present to you today, is what would their recommendations be for short-term priorities in order to make sure the jail, um, is stable until a new jail facility can be built? And so we'll walk through the timeline, the funding options for the new jail. But they're gonna follow, um, Director Short, as she talked about maintenance. They'll talk about those short-term recommendations of what they saw in their assessment of our current facility. And then we'll follow that with how we move forward with the jail and the options that, um, they've been looking at before they submit their final report on this phase of the jail planning process. So I'm gonna call up, um, Doug Shaw with Jericho. He is gonna walk through the presentation. There was a, an issue with Shane Clark not being able to be here today from SLAM. Doug Shaw's been part of the team and involved in all of the discussions. So he will go through that presentation and then I'll come back up with some of the information we received from our financial advisors on funding options for those, um, options that will be presented today. So I'll turn it over to Doug.
Good morning, uh, Mr. Mayor, councilors, city manager, city attorneys. A pleasure to be here on behalf of the design team. Um, what I'm gonna do today is really give you kind of a, uh, a recap of a little bit of what we talked about before and then come in with our recommendations. And then summarize two or three things that we have done, um, in the past to make sure that we're all on the same page going forward. So, um, I can use this? All right. So this is our agenda today. Um, so we're gonna talk about the maintenance and, uh, recommendations that we were just discussing. Uh, we're gonna talk about the programming process and what we went through, facilities we visited, things like that. Um, we're gonna show you the final numbers of the programming, which is basically the size of the building. Um, and then talk about some side options that we study as part of this process. All right, so, uh, repair and maintenance. So these are the categories we talked about before, um, and you see them in front of you. And we presented this whole list in front of you. Um, I'm just recapping this. You don't really have to read this. We're gonna go through this, um, and with our recommendations in just a minute. But this is just a recap of the things that we discussed. Um, you know, building systems, security operations, and then the facility itself, um, with the maintenance. And then we had Gil Bane and our, uh, our partners, our construction partners at Freeman take a look at everything. And we discussed these numbers last time. Again, this is just a recap of some of the things and some of the numbers. And I'm just gonna flip through these fairly quickly. Um, if you wanna pause on anything, let me know. But you're gonna see these numbers again in just a second. So you see all of these, uh, pieces and parts here? All right, so the highlighted items are where the rubber meets the road. So these are the items that we believe, uh, do need to be addressed. First of all, uh, we talked a little bit about leaky pipes and plumbing. I'm gonna start from the right and go to the left. Uh, we talked about the leaky pipes and the plumbing. Obviously, there's ongoing issues with that. Counselor Davis described the fact that it's been dry and we still got leaks. So that is an obvious thing that we need to work on. Um, we'll talk about cost of that. Moving to the left there, supplemental cameras. He's got a lot of cameras there, but there are a lot of blind spots. And blind spots are just risk. Um, I think what we need to do is minimize risk in the facility, uh, to get rid of some of these blind spots so that they can, uh, properly surveil the facility. They are there. I have seen them personally and I think it's a, it's a wise investment and we got some costs associated with that. Uh, from an operation standpoint, uh, those didn't really make the top. But if you go all the way to the left, facility repair, the building envelope, we know the bricks are falling off the building. Uh, we went through several pricing options. One of them is like a drapery system that would go over the brick. Um, others were framework on the outside. We'll talk about those, uh, options in just a second. Uh, roofing and perimeter, uh, copings. Obviously, this could be something as the, uh, roof report has been, has it been delivered yet? Okay, yes, yes, okay. It has been delivered. Um, we, we've costed some of this, uh, work and obviously we don't wanna put any more money into the roof than we need to. But we do wanna make it sure it's gonna last the next five years. Um, and then security glazing replacement. There are multiple areas in the facility where glass is broken, glass is scratched so bad you can't see through. So if you're an officer sitting in a control room, you need to be able to look and see what these inmates are doing. So it is a, uh, it's almost like a really a maintenance issue, but it is a cost, I think, going forward to run a safe jail that you need to do. All right, so, um, these are the, uh, the headings, if you will, of the kind of base recommendations. So, uh, building envelope, um, on the low end, it could be as little as sixty thousand. On the high end, it's, uh, one point five million. So the sixty thousand number is really this drapery system that we talked about. It is a steel, uh, drapery that could go over the facade and make, and make sure that the bricks don't fall off and hurt anybody. Um, they actually use this, and if you've seen this in Tennessee where they've got the, the rock walls that, uh, are part of the highway, next to the highway, they've got this drapery, metal drapery system. So that's something the low end. The high end is more of a, uh, a, a long-term, not a long-term, but a repair that will cost more money with structural steel. So we're hoping to go on the low end of this. Um, roofing and perimeter, uh, uh, perimeter coping. So the roofing system, like we said, um, we've got a, uh, report. We're gonna follow the recommendations, the report. But we also wanna make sure that we, uh, address it properly. You see the, uh, the range there is pretty wide. So again, we would wanna spend the money frugally and maybe on the low side versus the high side. And when we get into it, we'll be able to understand that. Uh, security glass, we just talked about. There's broken glass, it's gra, scratched so bad you can't see through. The sheriff's folks need to see the inmates and what they're doing. The leaking pipes was something we just talked about. Uh, whether you go with a, a contract with CGL or an internal maintenance, uh, group, a new group, either one doesn't matter to us, it just needs to happen. Um, and then security cameras you see on the low end, um, there are blind spots we need to, uh, to take a look at. And then the high end, you know, if we had to add a little more cameras, that's what that, uh, cost would look like. So in general, you're looking, um, in roughly five to ten million dollars here. Um, we would ob, obviously like to protect the city's money as much as possible, the resources, and, um, push it down to five as much as we can. But these are the base recommendations that we have at the, at this particular time. Any questions about this, uh, this area right here before I move on to the next piece of the presentation?
Counselor Davis?
Yeah.
Not yet, hang on, there you go.
There you go. Pull that slide back up. There you go. Building envelope. Why can't we get by with just areas of concern on the exterior? Again, the building's coming down. We can take a wire mesh or there's material that you can do and bolt it to the, may not look good, but you could bolt it to make sure it's a safety just in case anything comes down. I think that's an option. I think the structural engineer would probably recommend that. That would definitely be on the minimum side of something that can be done. Is that a possibility?
Yeah, and this, um, so this drapery system is basically a, a wire mesh that goes on the outside and they're using cable systems to secure it to the building. So that's on the low end. We wanna make sure we get with the manufacturer and see how viable that is. Um, if it doesn't seem like it's a proper, um, application of that, then we'll step up potentially to something else.
Well, just peeling the skin off just, just doesn't seem like the right thing to do on this building. But then the, uh, the roof, why don't you fix the plumbing? Can't you fix the plumbing first and try to deal with that and then come back to see if you have a roof leakage problem?
Um, well, and looking at the, uh, the roof and the roof report, it's a little bit of both that need to be addressed. I don't have the photographs with me, but.
Have they identified leaks?
Yes, and failures in the coping for sure.
So you can patch those, right? And see if you can get by and it'll work?
Yes, um, but what we need to do, we haven't done a detailed scope of work. Um, we've, you know, basically got a broad scope of work at this point. Uh, but yeah, we would walk the facility and look at the specific areas and try to do a patch versus a, a permanent re-roof.
I think if you can identify those leaks and patch them and then fix the plumbing, you can determine if you really got a roof problem before you spend that amount of money. The, uh, security glazing, that one's a mystery to me because it just seems like you could go through and cherry pick the bad panels. Again, the building's coming down, all this stuff's coming down. Before you put brand-new stuff in there, just get by with the bare minimal. I'm, I'm looking at that as replacing almost all the, uh, the damage, well, you say damaged panels, but probably all of it, it looks like.
Well, we, uh, number one, we would take a surgical, we would take a surgical approach, like you're saying. We would only replace those that are need. But security glass is obscenely expensive. And that's the reason we would do a surgical approach because it's a hundred dollars a square foot sometimes.
Yeah, and I'm, and in my mind, I'm just in the next three years before that thing comes down, I'm just trying to figure out what is that benefit is that gonna provide to you that we haven't already had the challenges with? You know, and maybe just surgically take some here and there, worst of the worst, if that could get you through to the teardown of the building, which would be the objective. Leaky pipes, we know that. Security cameras, I don't have a problem with that. Um, if that's what the sheriff deems necessary that they need, that's more of a helping the personnel matter versus anything. But I don't think you, that's gonna come down too, most likely. And, you know, we're, again, throwing good money out for bad. And I'm trying to stay away from that as much as possible while we stick all that money in a new jail.
Right, well, um, cameras can be reused potentially. Um, that's something that might be, uh, an asset to the future construction. But, you know, just depending on technology and the heading units and things like that, we can make that happen.
Is there life, safety matters here?
Um, well, in, in, um, my estimation, the security issues are life, safety, uh, because it's gonna protect both the inmate and the, uh, the officer.
That's security cameras and all, that's, you know, but life, safety is, is, you, you know what life, safety is.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying anything's really wrong with the sprinkler system or the fire alarm at this point.
Right, right. I would put security cameras in a separate line item.
Okay. Any other questions?
I, I didn't hear it coming about. You, you said you would put security cameras, what?
Security cam was going a separate line item. That's how it's always factored in with construction budgets.
The sixty thousand building envelope, that is to put up fencing and scaffolding to keep people away. The one point five is to put the.
Mr. Painter, would you say that?
Okay, that's right.
Would you repeat that so that we can all hear what you said?
So the sixty thousand was more of just doing a, uh, protective, um, zone around the building with plywood fencing and things like that. And actually, the one point five million was the drapery system that I talked about to protect the whole facade, to keep the, the bricks from falling and causing damage either on the existing building or, um, you know, not hitting anybody.
Counselor Beck? Counselor, I'm sorry, I thought you finished, hit your light again. Well, I know, but there are other counselors that have questions as well.
Yeah, are there other, have we determined that there's actual bricks on the ground that's already fallen?
I, I have seen the repairs. I don't know about bricks on the ground today.
I mean, I, I, I've walked the perimeter. I didn't see a whole, I see them on the building, up on the building, but.
Uh, Henry Painter with Gil Bane Building Company and Freeman Associates. There are bricks that have come off and there's actually photos where you have the brick. If this was a straight wall, they're leaning out like this. So, straight, they've been pushed out and they're getting ready to.
Yeah, my house does that, but it's not falling down.
Well, I would agree with that. This is actually probably six to eight inches bowed out.
That's a lot. And so, Mr. Painter, is, is that a, so how, how does something like this happen? Is that a maintenance problem or is it just something over the year, what, what, what caused that?
It could be a few things. Um, what the report stated was some of the brick ties were not installed and some of them have actually rusted due to water getting into that cavity wall.
Okay. Uh, are there other questions?
Yeah, Counselor Egley had some questions.
So, I, I, I get this is really delicate because we're putting money into a building that we're gonna tear down. At the same time, we're, we, we need to make these changes quickly. Is it possible to have this into a more granular phase approach where even if it's just six-month increments, counselor can get a better understanding of a, a smaller bite and said, hey, we're, we're committing to this for the next six months while we still understand some of these longer-term or nine, twelve, eighteen-month changes? Like, you know, separate those out just so that we can, in the essence of time, move forward on something that's a smaller bite, uh, while we continue to learn about the other changes?
I think a, if a, if you put a priority of like, what's the highest priority and the lowest priority, I don't think that, um, I'm really the right person to ask on that. Security may be the highest for the sheriff, but for other folks, it may be stabilizing the, the shell of the building. So, um, I'm sure there could be some kind of discussion on that to go from a high priority to a lower priority.
We do have a photo that shows where bricks have fallen off the building. But I don't know if we have the same overhead setup that, so we could put that up on the screen. But we do have. but I don't know if we have the same overhead setup that, so we could put that up on the screen, but we do have...
Counselor, let them finish what they're commenting.
Right, I'm just saying you were asking if there has been any bricks to fall. We do have photos where they have, bricks have fallen off of the structure.
And so I think Mr. Painter has a comment. You, did you want, Mr. Painter, did you want to say something?
No, I could show you Counselor Davis if you wanna see the photo here.
Okay.
Counselor Davis?
If you remember, I asked a structural engineer that question, specific question, and he said it was a decorative coping around the windows and the decorative bricks, and that stuff happens, but I've seen it too, and, you know, I don't look at it as the, the actual bricks that's been laid up along the face of the wall is actually popping off. It's usually in areas that will normally, you deal with that on all buildings. I don't think that's something that's not symptomatic of old buildings in general. It happens, but it's mostly on the decorative stuff that I've seen. I've seen some cracks in the building, that kind of stuff, but I haven't seen any sections of bricks that have actually came off the face and fallen out.
There are, that's Paul Gibson with Barnes Gibson Partners. Counselor, there actually are panels of brick that have come away from the substrate and fallen to the roof below, and there are cracks that we can show you pictures where it looks like it's about to come down in a ten-foot-by-twelve-foot section. So it's from a safety standpoint, that's our biggest concern, and that of our structural engineers. It's a risk that we're taking just leaving them as they are without some kind of protection at this point. But we do, we can get you more pictures to show you those conditions.
If I was gonna stay in that building long-term and continue to use it, yeah, I would agree a hundred percent on all this, but I know it's coming down here soon.
Right.
And, you know, the question is, you're gonna pump all that money in there to do it and nothing happens?
That's why we were looking for the most economical way to address the safety of a brick panel, say, falling from three stories up, and you wouldn't want it just going through the roof into the building below, so, or onto walkways around the building.
Thank you.
I think that's all the questions.
All right, so the next topic in the presentation is the programming process that we went through. So programming is where we talked to the sheriff's office, we use national standards and facilities that we've done in the past and kind of determine the size of the facility, the features that go into the facility, the departments, and the infrastructure that needs to go into the facility. So that's the, that's what programming is doing. This is the schedule that we went through. We visited several facilities, we had benchmarking tours, we went through very strong work sessions with the sheriff's office. Actually, the sheriff and I met at a, at a mental health conference too, to develop those areas of the facility and make sure we've programmed that area of the facility appropriately. So we have done a lot of work over the past six months in order to come to the final program number, which we'll show you here in just a second. All right, so one of the facilities we did go see is in Davidson County, I worked on that. The facility is about three years open. It does have a strong mental health area in it, it's actually a national model. The sheriff liked some of the things they were doing there, and we are gonna integrate some of the things that were happening in that facility. But his staff was there, and we really saw every inch of that facility, walked even the mechanical spaces as well as talked about how the operational flow happened in areas like the intake area. The other one that we went to is local, and this facility is about six years old, it's Forsyth County, it's about 600 beds. They used a steel cell system. It's a pre-manufactured steel cell that comes to the site, you lift it up and you put it in place. All of the maintenance is on the backside of these cells, so you don't have to go into a unit to maintain anything or, from a plumbing standpoint, heat and air or anything into the secure area. It's kind of the way that we've been designing these facilities for about 10 years now. Obviously, you have to take tools into the secure area where the inmates are to maintain the existing facilities, but the maintenance areas were very important as part of the longevity of the building, and he wanted to see this particular facility as well. All right, so our final programming report, which is basically the overall square footage that we're proposing for the facility, you see here, and you see it's got a lot of pieces and parts to it. The first line item is the recorders' court, we've added that to the building. A total square footage of roughly 26,000. As you go down the list, these are support areas in the facility. We've got medical, food, laundry, some warehousing areas, staff support areas, and those are training facilities. And then the secure housing area you see at the bottom line is the bulk of the square footage, is three-quarters of the square footage you get down to it. So three-quarters of the square footage that we're proposing is to house the inmates in a safe and secure manner, and the other quarter of the program is the support systems to make sure that the jail runs properly. And you see at the bottom of the page, it's roughly 1,600 beds is the program at this point. All right, so we talked about the beds themselves, this is a breakout of the square footage with the beds. You can see we've got different housing types there, general population. One of the things that the existing facility is very, very lacking in is segregation areas. About a half of your beds right now are dormitory, open bay dormitory beds, which is way beyond the national standards and what most jails have these days. They are very low on those type of open bay dorm areas because of violence and overcrowding. They can get very volatile very quick. So we're not proposing that type of unit in the facility. In our general population, we're gonna try to put everybody in cells, which is much more manageable and much more safe for both the inmate and the officers who work there. You see there's three types of mental health units there, including a step-down unit and then a unit similar to what we saw in Nashville. And I think that what this is gonna do is gonna really put the county basically ahead of the curve. This is not just a status quo for today and what is being done, this is really a futuristic-looking program for the county, and I think this, the emphasis on mental health is really gonna be unique, and if the building is built, you're gonna have people visiting this facility because of how forward-thinking that this is. Any questions about the program, size of the building, the items that go into the program for the facility? Okay? All right, so we have done two diagrams associated with...
We do, Counselor Davis has a question.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I like what you're presenting, and actually, I got a question about, I know that you came to us and presented some options. Where are we at on those, are we ready to make a decision?
On...
We're getting there.
The options of sites to move forward with this proposal.
I think...
It's coming.
It's part of this.
Oh, okay.
There you go. All right, so we've done some diagrams of the facility. You see it here, we're separating public and staff parking, we've got all the housing areas and support areas on one side of the facility. So this is a two-story facility, which is, I think, the preference. And then because of the site has not been determined yet, we did a three-story facility option. Essentially, you've got the same kind of support areas, public parking, staff parking in the same spot, but we collapsed the housing closer to the support areas and stacked it up a little higher there for three levels. All right, now we're getting to site options. All right, so this is the site that's Technology Parkway, you see the county, MCG? MCP, Muskogee County Prison. And also, you see the state facility right next to it, the landfill, and then the Technology Parkway is right there. There's a big piece of land there, it is a jail community, if you will, already because of the existing facilities. So from a fit into the, into that area, it has some advantages. This is about a thirty-acre parcel, but we understand that there's more shapes and a little bit more land out there, so we could shape the land according to what the needs are of the facility. So what we did is a couple diagrams, if you will, just to do a test fit of either the two-story or the three-story option on this particular parcel. And this is the two-story option on the parcel. The brick color is the building itself, and then the purple colors are the potential parking areas. You see, we've got room to allow that happen. And one of the things I wanna make sure you understand about these diagrams too, we have put in areas for future expansion into the brick color, so you're gonna be taken care of into the future with this layout. And again, if you do a three-story option, you have more land available, potentially more ability to expand in the future, and it does fit pretty well on this piece of property. So that's site one. Any questions before I move on? All right, so site two, so what you see here is a radius. And one of the things that the sheriff has talked about several times is ability to respond to incidents. And this is roughly a one-mile radius around the center. And we haven't identified the parcels yet that would make sense for the facility, but we do think this is the radius within the courts in the downtown area that the sheriff is looking for. And we've done some costing associated with this, which we'll show you in just a few minutes. All right, and then site option three is the existing site. As you can see, we've got boundaries, if you will, around it. We've got the rail spur right behind us, there's businesses to the north and across the street. And, you know, there's just not a whole lot of open land next to this particular site. So that's option three that we have taken a look at and from an expansion and addition standpoint. All right, so here's the site comparison, and we've got pros and cons listed. And I'm gonna turn my page. So site one is the one on Technology Parkway, we've got adequate area for the jail. We can go very horizontal with the jail, which is always an operational advantage. Horizontal meaning two levels is preferable. It is city-owned. The cons are the longer transport time and the security concerns that we talked about, I think the last time that we spoke about the project. Site two is the one-mile radius to the courthouse, we saw that diagram just a second ago. There's a lot of flood zone in that one-mile radius, so we've got to look for a piece of land that doesn't have a heavy flood zone component to it, because that just adds to the site costs. And potentially, there would be need to purchase property in order to find a piece of land large enough for this facility to be located there in that one-mile radius. And then site three is the existing site, it is close to the courthouse, it's city-owned, and a phased approach is possible, but it will take several more years to build if we do a phased approach there, because it would be a replacement facility. It would not reuse the existing facility. And the cons of reusing the existing site is the limited land area, and we may need some land to be purchased around it in order to give the new construction some elbow room so you can build that large facility that we're proposing next to the existing facility, and then when the existing facility comes down, it becomes parking or some other piece of the complex. So that is our update at this point, and I think, if there's any questions, I'll take those right now.
Counselor Davis? Yeah, from what I've gathered out of some of these conversations we've had, I think the closest to current is probably gonna be the best option. You know, pardon me thinks, you know, I guess this would be a call for the sheriff either way. If you have the available space, you can do it, but it just seems to me to be so much easier to maintain and work in long-term if you went two stories versus three stories. Three-thirds stories in my mind would be a maximum, but being able to have the sitability and keep it at two floors, there's just so much more, I think it's a so much more versatile floor plan or option than... Am I seeing, am I missing something here?
You are absolutely correct, my recommendation would always be two levels, not three. It just gets more difficult to respond properly.
Some of the issues we got is because of, you know, even in the government center, I mean, it's the, it's going up, but it should contain cost better, and all these issues we're talking about, hopefully, we get a lot, a lot of years out of it you wouldn't have to do with, and I think it would probably even help on the, on the management side for the sheriff and future sheriffs to handle a whole lot better and then at the same time be able to create any separations that you might need in high risk versus a lower risk, maybe on the mental health side, and then make it all work. So, help me if I'm not thinking right on that.
I'm a hundred percent, that would be my recommendation, and I think the sheriff would agree with that.
I know you can't do that on, I'm just gonna talk in general, okay? I know you can't do that on some of these options, but I think if you had the right space and the right land where you can do that, it would work.
I agree.
And if that's the case, then we need to go ahead and make some moves and control that aspect of it so we can move forward.
Thank you. Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor. Were you gonna get into the cost of each of these?
Oh, I didn't hit that slide, sorry. I guess this is where the rubber meets the road, right here. So you see the cost there and the bottom line of each of those, and I'm turning to my printout, and I don't see it for some reason. Anyway, and I can't see it from this angle. Oh, the next one? Oh, there it is, it's at the bottom there. So you see the three costs of those three options, and you see the overall numbers there. So the existing site is the most expensive, you know, it's 447 million. No, it's not. Should've brought my glasses. All right, so the first option is 405, that's that big green space open out on Technology Park. You could do the two-story scheme, the site development is very simple out there, there's utilities, things like that. So that's the reason that site is most economical. The conceptual budget for site two is 460 million, and that is associated with potentially a, an urban site, you know, preparing it in a way that allows this big piece of construction to happen. So it's a little more expensive, and then the existing site is 447 million. This one would take a longer period of time to build, you see, it's really six and a half years versus five years for site two in a similar amount of time potentially for site one, five years. So you see the pluses and minuses of each one of those and the costs associated with it and the timeline, and the timeline is an important thing to consider because, you know, building jails is a complicated process. We, you know, you will run into escalation, some additional escalation associated with site three, that I think is built into that 447, but seeing that amount of construction go for that period of time sometimes is frustrating to folks.
One reason I wanted to get into the cost is, well, let me ask you this question. You're the jail expert building, okay? How many do you bill that incorporate a hearing, video conferencing-type use with the, between the judges and the jail?
It is very common, we've been doing it for 20 years.
Okay.
For first appearance.
In my mind, it's less expensive for us to go with site one. We would have to incorporate video conferencing, I know there's some reluctance with some of the judges to do that. How do we get them comfortable with that?
Boy, that's a loaded question, I don't think I can answer. It really depends almost on the generation of the judge. I think younger judges are a little more open to technology versus the judges that have been on the bench a longer period of time, so it's really... really a personal preference. It's, it's working as, and it's successful all across Georgia right now, though. Um, so we could point them in the direction of people using it now, and maybe they could talk to them and see what their experience is.
Man, you're, you're looking at saving fifty million dollars between Option One and Option Three. I mean, it, it just seems to me that, that what we need to be thinking about, and we need to sit down and have a talk with, with the jurors and, and kind of get everybody comfortable with, with, uh, where we're headed and the cost and, and associated expenses with this. I know I'm not an attorney, but it, it just makes sense to me, uh, the more we talk about it. So, uh, Mayor, we'd like for, well, the city man- city manager, maybe try to set up a meeting with the judges to try to talk through some of this.
Sure.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Yeah, and I, I think what's important is to realize what we're looking at is a one-time cost, and it's gonna be lasting a long time. But the key thing to focus on now is your operating budgets and how the facilities are ran, and I think that looking at these options, you cannot, you cannot exclude the operational costs, logistics, transit, all those kind of things, additional labor costs, things like that. There's a lot of money there just by moving around on these sites. I see it. And so, you know, looking at, I think you could probably make the case that I, I don't like going out potentially seven, eight years, because I look at these numbers and I always get a little conservative, but, um, I do like getting it done and understanding that the operational budgets will be far less in some of these locations. And I think that's important, because when you add that long-term, then you start subtracting, you, you realize another option may be equal or less in the long run in cost and maintenance and logistically and management-wise from, especially from a management side. I think the sheriff would be ideal to, to answer those kind of questions. That's their world, they understand it, they know what they gotta deal with, but I think that's something that the council has to take in consideration too, not just a, a one-time cost, but also the, uh, the operational budgets on the management side.
Okay, uh, Mayor Protem.
One other question, is the location of the facility a factor in any of this?
Um, I'm sorry, I don't know if I understand your question.
Okay, if, if, for instance, we go with Site One and we do the video, the, the facility doesn't have to be close to the courthouse, right?
Well, um, the video is really just an initial first-appearance type of procedure. Um, the other procedures associated with the courts would have the transportation aspect to it. Um, you know, Superior Court, State Court, whatever's going on, uh, with the folks who are being detained. Uh, but having first appearance in a video situation is very, very common.
Okay, so again, does location of the facility have any bearing on the process, the legal process?
Um, it, it does. Um, you will be a longer time to transport, um, folks from potentially, um, Technology Parkway down to the new courthouse. Um, and I think the sheriff talked about this in the last meeting, he is, and, uh, you can do a better job with this than I can. I'm stumbling a little bit, but I think there's, there is a, um, there is, operationally, staffing is the gift that keeps on giving, and I think that's what, uh, the other counselor was talking about. Um, in all jail design, we try to do our best not to add permanent positions. Uh, one permanent position in a jail is actually four and a half employees, if you will, so we try to do our best to make sure the staffing is super efficient. And I'll let the sheriff respond to the, uh, the location.
Good morning. Regarding the, um, the Site Option One, uh, Mayor Protem, for me, that would be a nightmare for us to be able to transport and get inmates safe from that far to downtown. As you heard, uh, Doug mentioned earlier, that most judges will do the initial hearing, sometimes in-camera for the initial, um, um, hearing, but Superior Court judges, State Court judges, uh, it's been a practice here that even during COVID, they wanted the inmates in their courtroom. Um, and if there are conferences that they have to have between both attorneys, they want to have the, the, uh, they want to have the inmates there along with, along with both of the attorneys, but Option One, it's not my decision, that's a decision of the council, but, uh, but for safety reasons, Option Two is a much safer, uh, place for us to be able to get, uh, them to and, to and from court. Um, I've seen some things happen, um, the further out you are, the longer that it takes you to get there in the climate and what, and what we're dealing with right now. We wouldn't have the personnel to do that every single day.
Well, it sounds like what you're saying is we're down to two and three options. We're, we're, we shouldn't even be talking about Option One, because it's just not feasible.
No, sir. I mean, that would be correct, what you're saying. Yes, sir. Thank you.
I think we can cancel the meeting, the city manager with the judges.
So, other questions from, and so we got, it's, it's Deputy City Manager, come on back, and you want to talk about how we do this if we move forward?
So we did ask our financial advisors to put together this information for us, so this presentation was prepared by Davenport and Company, and I'll walk through it. Again, uh, they are not here, but this is just our standard information that we have asked them to prepare for us. This is our current existing and committed debt. Um, and this lists all the bond issues that we have issued over time. There is a second series phase of the Judicial Center bonds for the SPOLOST of fifty million, um, that will be coming forward, um, in the next several months when that funding is available. This is towards the Judicial Center. So this is our current, uh, existing and committed debt schedule. And again, this kind of just shows it in a bar chart how that existing debt service is committed over time. You can see in 2032 would be the end of the SPOLOST debt, and that would be for the Judicial Center. Both the Phase One and the Phase Two debt, uh, would come off at the end of 2032, which is, um, notated in gray and in blue on this chart. So after 2032, um, our debt, you know, goes back down for just those bond issues that had been done in the past. So again, on our, uh, debt profile, looking at the three options, uh, we did ask them to look at it really in two phases of borrowing. One is for the design, and if there is acquisition of property required as part of that, um, option, we did that in Phase One, and then followed that up with Phase Two borrowing, um, separate, and this would be the construction cost. So we, uh, broke the phasing out for each one of the three options, um, that we just went through today. Uh, just some of the assumptions, um, that we used, um, for the options. This is on available city property. This was Option One. Um, that would have a seventy-million-dollar project in Phase One, and then followed with the construction of three hundred and thirty-five million. These are dates that we, uh, provided to them, um, to use in these examples. Uh, we would close in September, and as, uh, you heard from the consultants today, they are finishing up the programming and planning, and we're ready to move forward into that next phase. So we used a September one date, uh, to start the Phase One. It would be a competitive sale like we've done in the past. Um, the interest rate that we've used on this, uh, particular bond is the current rate plus fifty basis points, level debt service, thirty-year amortization, um, so that we standardized when each one of these, um, options, uh, would have the same assumptions. We used on the Phase Two, which would be, um, we're estimating about eighteen months out, um, we used a five percent interest rate on that, and that would, of course, vary depending on what the market would be at that time. This obviously is a lot of numbers. This would just be the debt service schedule for, um, Phase One and Phase Two, uh, with a total. And this shows how that debt would then, um, be on top of the existing debt that we have. You can see in those, uh, first several years through 2032, um, when the SPOLOST bonds come off, you'll see how that debt, uh, comes back down. Think one thing that, uh, we need to make sure council is aware of is how this, um, particular debt would work into our existing debt management policy. We do have a debt management policy internal, uh, that limits the debt to one-point-seven-five. This is a internal policy, this is not a state policy, this is an internal policy. And so when you look at this chart, you can see where the line is. So any additional debt, we would exceed our internal policy, but we will not exceed the state policy. I think that's very important, uh, to notate. This shows the legal debt limit calculation and how, after the, uh, second phase is issued for the Judicial Center and both phases on the jail, how we would still be within the legal debt limit, um, that's outlined by the state. We would obviously go above our internal policy, but we would not be above the legal debt margin, um, for any obligation, general obligation bonds. This does not apply, if it's a revenue bond, to the legal debt limit. Again, for Option Two, we use the same assumptions. This is the new jail on a new site within the one-mile radius. Um, the borrowing would be a hundred and five million for Phase One, as that does include, uh, acquisition. We are estimating what the acquisition of property would be. There are several locations that we're reviewing at this time that would be brought back for council's consideration. And then the second phase would be for the construction of three hundred and fifty-five million. Again, this is just the debt service schedule, um, and this basically is the bar chart that shows, again, how that would fall off in 2033. And again, to show that we would be above our, um, internal policy, but still meet the legal debt limit of the state and still have, uh, room to, uh, provide additional remaining, uh, debt capacity. Again, this is only, this particular, um, only applies for general obligation bonds if that was the choice that council decided to go with as opposed to the Columbus Building Authority bonds. And then again, the same example, if, uh, the site, the existing site was selected, which is Option Three, the Phase One borrowing is eighty million and the Phase Two is three hundred and sixty-seven million. And these, all three of these examples are fairly close to each other, especially when you look at, uh, the debt service schedule and the impact it has on our internal policy, and again, the legal debt limit, uh, there is still debt capacity. So again, just to summarize, um, this particular chart does show, um, Options One, Two, and Three, um, for the jail debt alone, and then as a total debt, uh, related to all the other, uh, debt that we have for the city. This just shows that the, the debt service basically follows that same structure, um, very similar debt service requirements on all three options. One thing that, uh, we did have a conversation about with our financial advisors is our credit rating and how would this debt impact our credit rating. Um, currently, as you can see, we're with Moody's, um, they have a particular matrix scorecard that they use to evaluate municipal debt. We are a double A-two category based on all of the different criteria that Moody, um, looks at. When you add on the, uh, jail debt, it's a potential that our bond rating could go to a double A-three, although a double A-three is still considered high-quality, but we do have the potential to slip one rating, um, again, still remain in high-quality. Just wanted to make sure that, that council's aware, this amount of debt added to what we already have could potentially, um, reduce our bond rating from a double A-two to a double A-three, but again, that is still a very high-quality bond. It's about a five-basis-point difference in the debt service, um, interest rate when you, um, go from a double A-two to a double A-three. And then I just wanted to kind of go back and remind council about the different funding options. Uh, the Columbus Building Authority bonds, if those were the, uh, selection that council made, there's no referendum required. That is a council decision. Uh, going with a general obligation bond, that is, a referendum is required. Um, there also is a special purpose local option sales tax. We currently have one in place, began in April of 2022. Um, the collection rate is just over ninety-five million after twenty-four months, so instead of ten years, we're projecting that that's gonna take us about a little over eight years, so by the end of 2030, that SPOLOST, um, will complete and the four hundred million dollars will be collected. Just to remind you, if, uh, debt service is, uh, utili- is paid from, uh, millage, uh, one mil is about six-point-one million dollars worth of value. Um, we are, as part of the original O-LAST, um, one of the, um, projects that was done as part of the original O-LAST was expansion of the jail, and so we have an annual availability of one-point-five million of O-LAST public safety funds that would go towards, um, any debt service, uh, required for, um, any bond related to the jail. That was, um, one of the original, uh, commitments made as part of the O-LAST was the expansion of the jail.
All right. Uh, Counselor Davis.
Deputy City Manager Hodge, the, so, the current SPOLOST is, is, uh, determined on a collected amount of money, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So it's not, not an annual timeframe, which is great.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and we're collecting a lot of money on sales tax right now.
Yes, that's correct. We've collected, um, for the SPOLOST over the first two-year period, the first twenty-four months, just over ninety-five million.
Well, and that's looking a lot better being potentially five years from now, um, which would be an opportunity to have a dedicated revenue source to go ahead and pay it off from a, from a debt service standpoint. You wouldn't have to, you know, deal with the, uh, raising property taxes and things of that nature. You would have a dedicated revenue source if the citizens agreed to pay that. I guess my question is, I'm pretty sure if you went with these, the general obligation bonds, you could pay those off at any time, no, no penalty, right?
Right, and I'll have to defer to, uh, the city attorney. I believe if you wanted to do a SPOLOST, you could do it in advance to continue the SPOLOST, but there are some requirements on how it's, um, how the wording is done, whether you could use a future SPOLOST to pay off existing general obligation. So I think we need additional information on that.
What you just said, I'm thinking, I've never heard that talked about before. Just highlight on that a little bit more. I mean, this, this is city attorney, that's, that's important.
Mm-hmm.
There's a possibility.
Yeah, but it is.
Okay.
T-SPOST was passed before it was collected.
Okay, all right. Um, did you determine in borrowing that amount of money, that the interest that would be? How, how far you think, how much interest do you intend you think we can, uh, interest accumulated, not interest paid, but interest accumulated on the money that you would have in the account or you borrowed? I'm assuming we would do like we do all these other bonds, put it in a, I guess it's a Georgia One Fund?
Yes.
Something like that?
Yeah, right now, the Georgia One Fund is paying just over five percent, so it's pretty good return currently.
Yeah, if you're not spending it, so I'm wondering how far that could, could that even get you closer to that mark?
For the SPOLOST?
Uh, yes, in order to find a dedicated revenue stream.
So this, the SPOLOST interest that's earned on SPOLOST funds must be used?
No, 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 the bond. I'm talking about the bond.
So you can earn interest on, if you, if you borrowed funds, you can earn- So you can earn interest on, if you, if you borrowed funds, you can earn interest up to the amount of interest rate that you're paying. Otherwise, you have arbitrage that you have to refund if you don't meet the specific requirements of the bond resolution.
You just got to get the project going.
You have to get the project going and completed and cash flowed out in accordance with the bond documents or the interest rate. And if you do that, within the timeline that's outlined in the bonds, then all the interest that you earn, you can put towards the project. So we would have to cash flow out the bonds to see how much interest we could earn.
And what's the possibility of, I'm just thinking out of the box, working with all the trades involved, that, that they would work with you as far as getting the funding source where it needs to be in full and making those, and making those draws to be paid back. Does that, y'all follow me? Not really?
I did not follow that question.
Well, I guess extend the draws out a little bit further so, you know, we can make the finances work even better, maybe another year. So you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to incur the usage of that money, which in turn you could get the interest and then carry you out a little bit further until you get the dedicated revenue source. I'm just playing with trying to get to a certain point to, to pay for everything in full. You know, it would be a delayed payment, put it that way. Possibly.
If the trades had a delayed payment, they're going to factor in the financing for their payroll into their pricing. So long run, you may be making, coming out ahead, but the trades will have to put the SPOLOST.
That's what I was getting to. Theoretically, you could use the interest earned to offset that, to get you to a point where you get to a dedicated revenue source.
That's your correct.
I'm just thinking about how to ease that tax burden of debt service.
That would require some more study, but I have seen something similar to that. Without knowing more information, it's hard to, you know, say definite that that would work, but I think it's a high possibility.
Well, I, I mean, I'm feeling a little bit better about the finance option now with the, the other SPOLOST coming due soon. That, that would, you know, again, the whole thing is getting, getting started and getting moving.
So, so Mr. Mayor, if I may just ask Deputy City Manager Hodge a question about interest, I've heard a conversation about interest. So are we limited on the amount of interest that we can earn? Is there arbitrage concerns?
There is if you do not meet the spend down requirements that's established in the bond. So if, which is a pretty aggressive spend down requirement typically that you have to meet. If you do not meet those spend down requirements, then you're subject to arbitrage, which is any interest that you earn over what the interest is on the bond has to be refunded to the federal government. So there, there are requirements related to that.
All right. That's it.
No other questions.
So anything else you need to present today?
I do want to give the sheriff an opportunity, though. There are some additional concerns requests that he has related to the existing jail and the space. I know he's at capacity now. And so some of the things that we did not address today related to the capacity issues, we were looking at the maintenance of the facility and the new facility. But I do think he submitted, and, and it was on me that I didn't get this information ahead of time and included in our presentation. But there are some existing capacity issues that could come into play that will, could impact even the short term related to the mental health capacity as well as just bed space in general of the facility. So Sheriff, I don't know if you want to...
Good afternoon. I'll try to be brief for time. There were some concerns that I, that I noted that are concerning to me, that some of the things that, and I know that five years is, it seems like a long time, but for the employees within the Muskogee County Sheriff's Office, day in and day out, that, that they're dealing with concerns of overcrowding in certain, in certain areas. And just because we have, we may have a jail space available, but the jail space is not just space because we have to be able to classify the individuals and how we house them within the Muskogee County Jail. And so we're making more arrests. And so overcrowding is going to be an issue. We were at 1,079 yesterday, and the max capacity is 1,067, I believe. And so that's something that we really need to consider as temporary housing. Because if we have to move some of the individuals, it could carry a price tag into the millions, about, maybe about $5 million for one year. That's going to be the primary issue that I see that will be of concern. And even doing that, we have to have some type of a safety tool that we can use to get personnel to come in and to, and to manage the, manage the staff and the, you know, inmates also. Because if we build it in phases, in which I don't know what that process is going to look like, but if you build a jail in phases, we have to have someone there to be able to care and to maintain the safety operation of the jail. And so if that is the case, we would probably need about 1.5 million dollars per year for that, in order for us to maintain the safety issues of that. Are there any questions about any of that? Okay. Thank you.
So with that, Mr. Mayor, council, it, it sounds like site options, you've taken option one off the table, and we're going to focus on option, site options two and three. And of course, Deputy City Manager shared with you the funding options, GO bonds, CBA, and special purpose local option sales tax. And so those would be the options for funding. She's talked to you about our, our debt management policy of 1.75, a fair market value of all of taxable property. But that, we would exceed that, but not the state debt policy limit. She shared with you what could potentially happen with our bond rating, our current bond rating of double A two could slip to double A three, but we're still in the high quality. And so we wanted to make sure all of that is clear. So that's that. And as we focus on moving forward with the new jail. But then in the short term, we've had much discussion on that. And we are in need of direction. Where, where we go from here. We will proceed with researching a possibility of a building department, you know, carving that out from Public Works with a leader, with leadership staff and with, with professionals in terms of plumbers and carpenters and electricians that, that we pay consistent with the, the private market if we're going to keep them. And so we will do some research and try and put together what that might look like, a building department with pay bands and so forth. But there are some things that we need to do right now. And I appreciate all of, everybody here today sharing their professional look, opinions, and projections. But, but we are going to need a phase one, and I'll refer to it as a phase one budget. I don't know. We, we know that we've got to deal with some plumbing, some roofing, and some other things. And there's more work to be done to determine the extent of roof replacement, if any at all. But certainly, there's going to be some pipe replacement to get us through the next five years. And so we need a budget that would be a phase one budget. And as I presented at the last meeting, I, I think we need to start with 6 million to 8 million dollars. And then with that budget, we can come back to you and share with you, you know, how we proposed using that money, what we propose using it on. But the goal is to build a bridge to get us to that point that we, we have a, a new jail. And we project it's going to be, it's five years out if we start it today. So we need your direction, but certainly what I propose to you is starting with a, a phase one budget. And just because you approve a phase one budget, that mean, doesn't mean that we getting ready to go spend 6 million dollars. It means we're going to identify the things that we need to do, and then we'll come back to you and share with you. And if you think we should spend it on those things, we will. And if you don't, we won't. So we got to start somewhere. And so Mayor, that's where I am. And we need some direction. We need a budget.
All right. I think you've heard a number of common concerns today, so that'll help and go towards shaping that phase one and the budget. All right. Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
Okay. So obviously, there's no action. So we don't do anything until, just keep doing what we've been doing.
I have not heard a motion.
Well, I think they just, what they just showed.
I think, I think what you're going to have to do is take the conversation and the information from today, package it, put it in a presentation, a recommendation, bring it back, and then tweak it and pass it next week.
We'll, we'll come back at the next meeting. We're going to keep coming back.
No, I, I agree.
We got to do something.
I agree. And, and I think that's been the, and I, and I applaud staff because that's been the initiative, the reason for this initiative all along, is to try to make sure that we shore things up for the employees in the jail and make sure that it's safer in there and that, that we've, we've gotten ourselves on a track where we see a, a result in the distance and we can work towards.
Okay. So with that, we will move on to our final presentation today, our revenue update.
It's me.
And thank you all for coming.
Counselor Huff.
Comment, Sheriff, before you leave. As we discuss on our end, I just want to make sure I understood from the council's perspective, that as we put things in priority, I don't know if we're talking about the whole city, but in reference to the jail situation, we need to look at the information that was given as far as the safety of the jail, the employees, the inmates. And my little understanding of roof leaks and plumbing, I think a roof leak is probably urgent to try to stop it from leaking because if water gets inside, it's more damage to what's going on. And then it could cause mold and other health issues. And then the plumbing itself could do the same thing. So I'll reach out to you and try to get a little bit more information as we move forward. Thank you.
Counselor Tucker.
City Manager, is it possible for you to bring either a sample contract or a contract for the actual CGM? If they would do like a, a contract, once you put all the things that was discussed?
Yeah, we can do that.
That way we can look at the contract and then, I don't know if, we got somewhat of a punch list, but just put in a punch, also when we collectively bring, do like a punch list of, you know, what's really needed, high priority to the lease, and also the contract.
So I, I'll have the Public Works Director to see if we can get something like that.
Thankfully, we got a little time, July ninth, and not next week.
Counselor Davis.
We don't have, we don't have a call.
Oh, yeah, Counsel Baker.
We can come back, Mayor. We can come back.
Okay.
We can come back, Mayor.
All right. Attorney Financial Director.
Good afternoon. I'll be brief, as brief as I can possibly be. But again, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So the last update that was given was a three-month update that was given back in March of '24. We committed to providing counsel with quarterly updates. And so that's what we're doing here today. So in terms of restructuring of the revenue division, obviously, some personnel changes have taken place. Some duties and responsibilities are shifting as we move towards gaining some of those efficiencies that we would like to see with some of our billing processes. With the completion of the ambulance billing RFP, we do have some of our, one of our collection staff transitioning over to Fire DMS to focus on, on that. And the remaining staff will focus on collecting revenue for the finance department. Temporary staffing, well, what I've heard and what City Manager has agreed to is to authorize temporary staffing in FY '25. I will say that hopefully before, or around the mid-year budget, that we'd be able to obtain the additional staffing that was originally requested. We'll obviously make every effort to fill these temporary positions so that we can make impactful change and continuously improve our processes. But I'm just saying, it's going to be kind of difficult to do. Some of the turnover that we're seeing in some of these temporary positions, we're, we're kind of on our fourth individual right now, serving as our administrative assistant, still having not found or filled some of the other positions because we're just not receiving those applicants that we desire to receive. But again, we'll make every effort to keep moving forward with improving our processes with the temporary staffing. I will be back in accordance to 13, 13 dash, ordinance number 13 dash 39, in rela, in relation to some of the budget overages that I will have for FY '24. And obviously, at some point for FY '25, for the staffing that we do have, obviously, that is an unbudgeted expense. So there are also Department of Labor rule changes that are coming in which we hope that some of this additional staffing will help mitigate some of the costs, particularly for overtime labor. There are some, there are different thresholds that will be applied to the salaries of employees, and that will determine whether they are classified as exempt employees or non-exempt employees. And so those are just some changes that are coming down the pipe, and hopefully the staffing will help mitigate some of those costs. So policies and procedures, obviously, we're still reviewing and updating our operational policies and procedures. We have made some changes, but there's more on the way. One of the changes that we hope to make, starting at the beginning of next week, in addition to our senior staff person handling the code notification request, is that those would transition from an offline process to an online process and us utilizing the system to create those code cases for code enforcement so that would end the duplication in their work with us creating the cases in the system. so that would end the duplication in their work with us creating the cases in the system for them to manage. And we are still conducting the weekly system improvement meetings between IT staff, finance, and inspections and codes. We've just implemented the last upgrade that's needed for our online processing. We've successfully, as of yesterday, successfully tested that functionality. And hopefully, we'll have a soft go-live, so to speak, by next Monday, June twenty-fourth. I know Code and inspections and Codes are working with certain vendors for the online permitting aspect, and we are identifying businesses, particularly those that would be transitioning to an online payment process for excise taxes, we're looking to identify those businesses this week. We'll send out some communication regarding the excise online tax payment transition, and hopefully, have that in place soon after the beginning of the fiscal year. So, in terms of the licenses processed, we are better still than we were in twenty nineteen. Today, well, as of June ninth through June ninth, we processed sixty, over sixty-nine hundred licenses that's applicable for all years, and for the current year licenses, just over six thousand. This is a forty-eight percent increase over where we were as of Week twenty-three in two thousand twenty-three. In terms of the renewals and the payment licenses that are still pending in our lot box, as of last week, we have about two-hundred-and-fifty-eight accounts that are pending processes. Those are the accounts that we are still working through, that we have not either processed a license or issued a problem letter to. We currently have about three-hundred-and-seventy-two problems. Once we sort of work through the initial list, which our goal is to be completed with the initial list by the end of June, we'll go back, we'll circle back to those accounts that we identified as problems, so that we can get those issues resolved and those license renewals processed. So, in terms of the revenue, right now, year-to-date, we've collected about a hundred-and-seventy-one-point-four million in revenue in the General Fund, about twenty-three million, or thirteen-and-a-half percent of that is relative to occupation taxes. And, I'm sorry, I didn't click the next slide, and I gave the numbers there, but that's just a chart showing the year-over-year revenues for the General Fund, as well as occupation taxes. And so, for twenty twenty-four and beyond, the Finance Department will obviously continue processing renewals and following up on those problem letters. We do anticipate we'll be able to get those delinquency, those courtesy delinquency notices out sometime in July. As, again, we're shooting for the end of June to really sort of working through that first pass of the ones that we currently have in the office as pending through our lot box. And then, you know, also subsequently following up with those problem accounts that require renewal. Again, implementing some online processing for some of the excise taxes and code inspection permits. We hope, again, to have a soft go-live for that part of the process on Monday, June twenty-fourth. And again, it's a soft go-live, we've, I know Code and Inspection has identified certain businesses in which they are utilizing to test the permitting process, and we're identifying those businesses that'll test some of the excise taxes. And we hope that for July's reporting, which will be due in August, that we'll be able to have those accounts fully online for the hotel motel taxes, in particular, as well as the mixed drinks taxes. We have about fifty accounts for the hotel motel taxes, that's an approximate number, and about four-hundred-and-twenty-plus for the mixed drinks, so. Working towards that, again, with the full online capability, we're shooting for the next tax renewal season for all of the business license accounts. That'll be effective January one of twenty twenty-five. Gonna need the staffing to make sure that that is a success. But continuing to review the processes, the policies and procedures, and again, providing those, these quarterly progress updates to the Mayor, City Manager, and Council. Sort of what's coming up next in terms of the plan, there are some code changes that we will need to make to, as we prepare for online renewals in January. There are some antiquated code that needs to be updated. Some of the, some of the code just hadn't been updated in a very long time. So, we need that in order to get current with what the current state regulations dictate in terms of some of our taxes, but namely, so that we can have a smooth transition, hopefully, for full-blown online renewals in January that will require some code updates. So, I will be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Councilor Tucker.
Yes, ma'am, I'm going back to Slide two, where you had the six-month up, update. At the bottom, I noticed that you said it's, it may be a challenge into recruit talent for temporary positions. How many temporary staff do we currently have in Finance?
Currently, it is four in the Revenue Division.
Are we looking at her additional, or just keeping the four?
No, we're trying. I mean, the ones that we currently have, two actually just started yesterday. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a cycle, a continuous cycle, and, you know, when they find permanent employment, they leave us, so.
Okay, are they, and I, and I know, far as I see recruit talent, are they able to help, like, process the license renewals? Or, like, what role are they actually sitting in that will actually provide, really, the help that you need to get the business licenses out?
Well, currently, the positions that we have temporarily filled is the administrative assistant, as well as the three additional licensing tax clerks. Again, one has been with us for a few months now, I believe she started in December. But the other two individuals who we've classified as tax clerks just started yesterday.
So, those will be the ones?
Those will be the ones in terms of processing license renewals, in addition to the auditor. I mean, we do have alcohol licenses that we issue, and currently, we only have two auditor positions. One is presently vacant, we do hope that that position will be filled as of next Monday.
Are we looking at, and I'm not sure, I know with me being an IT field, you had kinda like a specialty, I guess you could say recruiter, that would really help bring in those individuals with those finance skills? Do we have those type of connections that will help you get the right people you need in these temporary positions?
Well, I, we, I have been utilizing HR, HR has been wonderful in filling in those, the gap in terms of these positions and finding additional staffing when needed. So, I've been really utilizing and leaning on HR to help with finding the talent for these positions. Now, some of these positions, I will say, I'm gonna admit that we have not yet advertised, like, I did not advertise the revenue analyst position or the assistant director position, because it was so close to the start of the fiscal year that, you know, my assumption was that they would be a part of the budget, and we could advertise them as permanent positions at that time. So, those two have not been advertised, but the revenue auditor position has been out there for a while. The temporary revenue auditor position has been out there for a while, and we've only received three applications.
So, I know that we have a new Revenue Manager, and I'm sure it takes a while to get caught up with kinda like the roles and responsibilities. Would that person actually be helping with processing the business license and things like that? Kinda like Yvonne Ivy did, 'cause she was actually helpful in that part, where she, you know, helped the staff.
Well, there is some duties and responsibilities that will transition to the Revenue Manager, primarily from, possibly from the collection side. She will know how to process licenses, obviously. But I would rather the manager focus on managing the division as opposed to being bogged down with the processing. I think that's part of the problem in, in terms of us being able to do what we've done for so many years, is that the manager has been a processor of sorts, and as opposed to really being a manager for the division. Thank you.
All right, Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Finance Director, we, we'd be, we haven't received, I guess a lot of us call it a dashboard, just a snapshot of what we get, you know, kind of an informal P and L that you give us all the time. We haven't received that in like six months, I believe.
Yeah, it's been a while.
We used to get them like monthly, right? Or is there a plan, those are very helpful.
They are, I'll do one, I'll do it at the next council meeting, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, those are really good, yeah. If there are no other questions, Mayor, that concludes my agenda today.
Okay. Councilor Davis.
Mayor, I'm, I'm going to present this to my colleagues with the intent to make a motion, but I think in, when the City Manager summed up, you know, after he listened to everybody's concerns and input and feedback, I think he, he, you know, communicated that he needed to proceed forward with the phases, the goals of some of the things that need to be taken care of in the jail. The, whether our management, or the maintenance company, or the building of our own maintenance team, and those kinda things, I think is totally separate. I, I think I heard him say that he'll continue to work on that, but he needs a budget. He needs some money to be earmarked now that they can go ahead and get started on like the piping and some of the things that they've already talked about. We know they need to be fixed, but the longer we push it out, it, it's, it's just further delaying it, and we know we need to do, deal with that. The budget is, the way I see it, it's not like it's all used upfront, but it's an earmarked amount of money that they can start working with, and probably won't even exceed the amount. I think the City Manager said he needed in the first phase, possibly six to eight, somewhere in there. Six, would that be sufficient to start?
Yes.
The City Manager?
Yes.
And being that they can go ahead and get some of these things done. We can't do them in-house, and certainly mitigating some of them things will tell us, give us a better idea and understanding of where we're at and what to do moving forward. So, I don't mind making that motion so they can start working on it, versus if we wait another two weeks, which I think is the next council meeting, another two weeks, and then, you know, the City Manager's gonna keep coming back and telling us the same thing. But if, you know, my concern was more on the, on the side of the building a maintenance team and that side of it, but I, I, I'm in agreement with City Manager on the phases that we gotta start. And I think, you know, he, I think the communication I received, we're thinking a lot alike and moving forward, and I think right there at the end, he said we'll continue to keep an eye on it, and with the intent to do our best in managing the financial resources, knowing that the, the end, what the end is, the sum of the end, and hopefully get us to that point. So, I don't mind making that motion if my colleagues, six million with that work, Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
And go ahead and get him moving, his office and the management team moving forward on that.
All right, there's a motion and a second to budget up to six million dollars for the phased-in maintenance of.
Phase one of the work that needs to be done at the jail.
Remediation in the jail. All right, any discussion on that item? All in favor, say aye. Is any opposed? All right, that is approved. Madam Clerk, your agenda?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the Clerk's agenda, item one is a resolution excusing.
Motion second to prove a resolution exclude, excusing.
Excusing Councilor Thomas from today's meeting.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Item number two, this is an honorary designation application.
Motion second to forward to the Board of Honor, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Item three.
There's a motion second received in minutes. Does anybody have any they'd like to pull for a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? They're perceived.
Next, we have board appointments, we have the council's district seat appointments. Any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. We have outlined the Youth Advisory Council, still requesting nominees for District two, four, and five. Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation, the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission. Ms. Pamela Green Thomas was nominated to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Eddie Florence as the Senator District fifteen representative.
Is there a second for Ms. Hastings? All right, motion and a second to confirm Ms. Green and Ms. Hastings. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? They're confirmed.
Next, we have council appointments, any nominations would be listed for the next meeting. For the Columbus Aquatics Commission, we have three, I'm sorry, four seats.
Yes, yes.
Have four seats that are open for nominations for the Columbus Aquatics Commission. For the Historic and Architecture Review Board, Councilor Kogle is nominating Mr. Mike Johnson to fill the expired term of Ms. Libby Smith as the historic district resident, and we will bring this back for confirmation at the July ninth meeting. For the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, Mr. David Hauser has expressed an interest in serving another term. If a member of council wanted to make that nomination. Mayor Protem Allen has made that renomination. We'll bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. For the Region Six Regional Advisory Council for the Department of Behavioral Health and Development of Disabilities, Council Kogle is nominating Ms. Jennifer Ledini to succeed Mr. Christopher Posey. And if there are no other nominations, we will bring this back for confirmation at the July ninth meeting. And, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. The City Attorney is going to be facilitating the council hearings. But before that, Mr. Mayor, I did just want to also commend Councilor Begley for his service and work as the Council District ten representative. Whenever you bring forth anything, you've done your research, you've done your review, and you just are very thorough in anything that you present. And so, I just wanna commend you for your service, and thank you. And I hope this is not the last time we'll have the opportunity to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilor Tucker, do you have?
Yes, Madam Clerk, for the Youth Advisory Council, I had several people asking whether they can get their pastor, like youth pastor, to do a letter since they're out of school. What would be the qualifications for them to submit their application regarding that?
Right, it's, they would just need to be a student within the Muskogee County School District, and I think it's six through ten, uh, six through twelve, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Six through twelve, middle, I believe, middle school through high school. And Deputy City Manager Lisa Goode can correct me at a later time if that is incorrect. But I believe that's what it is.
Thank you.
All right, Councilor Huff.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank staff and everyone on the Bunker Hill Roadway I talked about last time. It's been completed now for the third time, they say everything's working, so I thank you for that. They say everything's working, so I thank you for that. Also, um I have some issues in Benning Hills from a couple of different locations that I'll get you the information on, get it to you in three one one. And to uh Sergeant Major Dean for the last time. Uh he did not want to upset the true command sergeant majors in Columbus, Georgia. So I made reference to Command Sergeant Major Dean and he let me know. He's just a sergeant sergeant major, Dean, not command sergeant. So he said he wanted to make peace and didn't want me to interrupt anything in the community. So to Sergeant Major Dean, thank you, it's been corrected. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I think we've got a couple of um council hearings to be held. We'll let uh Miss City turn a few and hit you. There you go. And I will thank those individuals that have been waiting all day long to uh to be able to address uh this stuff, including our tax commissioner.
Okay, um Tax Commissioner Huff, if you come to the podium. We've got three requests for a waiver of penalty and interest today. First one is Mr. R. Murray Jones. I think he's been here since the beginning of the meeting, but he has requested a total refund of six hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty cents. And Ms. Huff has a report on the clerk's agenda, her office. The first installment was not received by the due date, therefore penalty and interest were applied, but she finds no evidence of gross or willful neglect or disregard of the law. So you wanna comment before we see if they've got a motion, Ms. Huff?
No, I think you have a brief summary uh in front of you. If you have some additional questions to ask, you may do so. Simply, he mailed the two checks in the mail slot, however, we never received them. And payment was later made in January of two thousand and twenty four.
All right, there's a motion and a second to uh provide the refund.
The six eighteen.
The six hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty cents. Uh any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ms. Jones, thank you for the patience.
That request is granted. The next next request is for waiver of penalty and interest for Mr. Kenneth Harris and Lincoln Realty. Total amount, penalty and interest, three thousand two hundred and seventy nine dollars and sixty six cents. Uh Ms. Huff's position, payment not received by the due date, therefore penalty and interest were applied in accordance with the law, no evidence of gross or willful neglect or disregard of the law. Any comment?
He put a stop payment on the checks. Okay, so when he put a stop payment on the checks, therefore we didn't receive them and penalties and interest applied.
Okay, any questions or a motion? Can you explain what happened with the checks?
Yes, he had us, from what I understand, uh there was a series of checks that he was requesting a stop payment from his bank. And he inadvertently had his property tax checks included in that stop payment. And so therefore, uh they stopped payment on the checks.
Would it be appropriate for Mr. Harris if you have anything to add to that, to address council? You have to come to the podium.
I'm going to have to excuse myself. I have a two o'clock appointment with my doctor, so uh I'm gonna let um my deputy for property tax pick it up from here, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so very much. And I would like to say thank you, Counselor Begler, for Begley, for all of your assistance in our office, and we do appreciate you.
Thank you, Madam Tax Commissioner. Thank you for waiting all afternoon, too. Yes, sir, if you wanna do something you wanna add.
Give him your name and address for the record that Mr. Harris.
Yes, sir. Uh, this is about a two-year process and it uh started with some fraudulent activity on my checks. So I blocked a hundred checks, took them out of my ledger, shredded them. Unfortunately, uh in the early part of two thousand and twenty three, I wrote a couple of checks to some individuals that I owed money for doing some work on my properties and then I got a phone call uh from them at the bank. And so I went down and investigated it and and uh I ended up paying them cash. And so what uh was uh I I just, it it's just a combination of a lot of things. And so how I found out, you if you have a bounced check, you get notified through the bank or some some means. If you have a blocked check, you never get notified. And so I couldn't put two and two together, but as soon as I did, I went to the uh to the tax uh office and I, this was on a Thursday and I tried to pay them then and they said, no, can't uh we can't accept it. And so I come, I went back Friday and then I tried to pay and then I uh talked to Lulu Huff, second in charge. And uh he said, no, it's already been sent to collections. And so there was nothing he could do about it at the time. And so I uh and I was dealing, had to deal with the collections. And uh so I I came back the next week and talked to the second in charge and he told me, you wait till we get it back. And then he said, and then I waited, waited months. And so they got it back from collections and then I, that's when uh I I went down and I said, well, what what do I do now? And they said, well, you have to go to the council. And then what about the money that I owe you? And he said, well, it's probably best that you go and pay it. So I paid the amount. But what was what stopped uh what was really um problematic and and heartening for for me and my wife was the the amount because I have um uh twenty, I had twenty-five properties. I would, I paid it all at one, I didn't pay it all at one time. I paid tw- twenty-three thousand dollars worth and then I paid about four thousand. So the it's ten percent when it goes to um collections. So it was almost three thousand dollar fine for a mistake accidental, in my opinion, honest mistake. But all this has has something to do with my health. Uh I was recovering from uh leukemia. I got through that, but because of the leukemia that I had, I um there was no doubt in my mind and my wife that we were going to do the bone marrow transplant. And a bone marrow transplant is worse than a leukemia cuz you have to go through chemotherapy and radiation. It depletes your body. And so I was recovering from bone marrow transplant. And it's just uh amazing to me that I couldn't get any, I couldn't pay the bill because it was in collections. I couldn't get any help from uh the collection agency. And so that's why it's been like a two-year process. And so if you can see fit to grant me this waiver, I'd certainly appreciate it. And um I promise you it'll never happen again.
All right, there there is a motion uh from Counselor Crabbe and a second from uh Mayor Pro Tem to uh repay, because you've you've paid the the penalty, right?
Yes, sir.
So it's to reimburse the penalty total of three thousand two seventy-nine sixty-six, is that right?
Yes, sir. No, wait, no, no, I don't, I don't think I paid, I paid the full amount that I owe for my taxes. Including penalties, I didn't know I.
Okay, all right, well, all in all in favor of reimbursing it, say aye. Any opposed? All right, it'll be reimbursed.
Okay, now, that the thirty-two seventy-nine sixty-six is now refunded, they've waived that penalty and interest.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh and then the last hearing we've got is Ms. Ebony Bryant. Is that, is she here? Okay, um Tax Commissioner's position, uh this was a bankruptcy in two thousand and eighteen. Penalty and interest accrued. And there's no evidence of gross or willful neglect by the Tax Commissioner, so. Ms. Bryant, would you like to?
Hear the facts and the amount?
Yeah, fourteen oh eight seventy-nine is the total. Did you wanna comment?
Uh no, sir, just was presented there, that's all we have today.
Okay.
All right, there's a motion to uh refund fourteen oh eight seventy-nine. Second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Okay, ma'am, that has been waived, the penalty and interest fourteen oh eight seventy-nine. I think that was the end of the clerk's agenda, is that?
All right, motion and it.
Move. Got a request from Counselor Davis for an executive session on real estate acquisition and disposal.
All right, well, there's a motion to go into executive session for what? To discuss land acquisition. Is there a second? All right, there's a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are in executive session. All right, we are, we are back from executive session. We discussed the possibility of land acquisition. No votes were taken. Uh we now have uh Mr. uh Broadwater coming back for his additional three minutes. And again, sir, I apologize for the basic process, but we're gonna use my my phone, so there you go. Hang on, come and.
Not a problem, Mr. Mayor, and I'll I'll use the extent of those three minutes. As always, thank you for your service. I I truly mean that, but um I do feel like our charter is just, it's so antiquated that we're not, and we're not using it. We're not really going back, in my opinion, that we're not going back to our charter. Um and we're focused on uh a lot of things that should be addressed in the charter. And the charter review ten years, that's just too long. Um I do feel like I was reading the charter last night and and something hit me and it talked about the state of emergency. We're in a state of emergency. Uh I know the mayor disagrees with me when I say twenty years from now Columbus is gonna be annexed. And um I I I truly believe that. Um because when you have this type of crime that we're we're going through now, when a nine-year-old, a nine-year-old is accused of conspiracy of murder, think about that. Uh like, and I said just yesterday, a fifteen-year-old was killed in E. Kenny. I just, I just hope and pray that, I'm trying to, I'm trying to touch somebody's heart here. I don't know who, but somebody's heart. Um we've got to do more for our kids and the charter, uh it gives you all of your authority. You guys are gonna do what you think is best for this city. Um and I appreciate that. I might disagree with uh the way that you do it, but I appreciate you giving your time. But I I I think that we have lost sight of our priorities. Our priority is to be sure to our youth because that's what, that's who's gonna lead the city tomorrow. And somehow, some way, uh we've got to look at that. I talked to uh elections and registration and going through the the Secretary of State's office. I was told we could find a way that this never happens. We never have to create an ordinance to put somebody in the office. Something about like that, I said that is inherently wrong and our charter should address that. Um I talked to one person that's in authority and I would say that why, why can't a counselor just say who do they say should replace them at some point, sixty days in? Uh I don't know, I don't, I don't have the answer. But what we're doing right now is just not, I don't think it's right. I think that we need to really look at it. But again, thank you for your service. Uh thank you for your time. God bless all of you.
Thank you, sir. All right, uh Counselor Huff, did you have something? Okay, uh there's a motion to adjourn, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we stand adjourned.